At um four P M, um Councilman Nate Brewer is gonna open us up in prayer.
Father God, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We ask you, Lord, to give us the knowledge and the wisdom to do your business. We ask you, Lord, help us uh be in your will at all times. We ask you, Lord, to forgive us where we fail you. Keep us safe when we leave. In your name we pray. Amen.
I think so. And before we get started, guys, I'm gonna request um that we all wear our mics. Um we had a few people tell us that they weren't able to hear us, and I have a bad habit of not wearing my own. So it's okay. Can we all just put our mics on just to make sure everybody out in the audience can hear us today? I guess y'all can hear me pretty well?
This is on Alex.
Yes, sir.
So the um number one on our agenda is recognize twenty twenty-four A E Gymnastics National Champions who performed in Daytona, Florida. Um Alex, we're gonna um.
No, ma'am. The showtime is five o'clock. The four o'clock session was for um the capital projects, the bond information.
Some of that's out loud.
Yes, showtime at five o'clock.
So do it as it's not by time order. Start at five.
Alright, so we're gonna start on number five.
Yes.
So it's one through four.
Those personnel will be here at five o'clock.
Okay, alright.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that. So we'll start with number five, discussion that is necessary by Mayor Jim Hyatt and the City Council regarding the underwriter for potential general obligation warrant issue. Mayor?
Are you looking for the uh? You got it, Alex?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you. Um does anyone want me to read all this for you?
Um if you don't mind, or would you like Alex to read it for you, or you? Yeah, I think we need to read it out loud.
Days of June the thirtieth, thirty of twenty twenty-four, uh James Higgle, Mayor of the city of Solocaga, feel obligated to veto resolution seven twenty twenty-four for the regret uh for the following objections. Uh objection number one, the council hereby authorized the engagement of Michael Sanders Company as the underwriter for the potential issue for general obligation of warrants. During the course of seeking out a firm to utilize in the security of the bonds with the city of Solocaga, the council would provide the three reputable alternatives of professional services to handle this matter. Despite the same bond amounts and service outlined, the city council has selected the professional service of the highest rate. While we have successfully secured bonds utilized the firm in the past, I do not feel that this should be the default for the purpose of alone, this purpose alone. I feel that the council should bear more scrutiny, scrutiny, excuse me, regarding the matter when the difference is four eighty-four thousand is at stake between Piper Sanders and Sifel and the difference of ninety-two thousand is at stake between options of Piper Sanders and Fraser Lanier Company. For inquiries regarding the thirty million bond alone, that's just for thirty million bond alone, the that's uh this petri's, this petri's are even greater when considering the larger amounts which are about to come. I urge the council to reconsider your selection to determine the firm as the underwriter. Please take into account your selection based upon the services outlined within the proposals, the rates, and the general materials of the firms as a whole. While it is true that the city council and the city of Solocaga has utilized Piper Sanders in the past, and this has no reflection on them or their representatives, the Fraser Lanier Company has also utilized by the city of Solocaga in the past. The arising of processing with the city of Solocaga should be least substantial factor some of should excuse me, substantially factor among the considerations undergoing the process while obligating the city of Solocaga to a substantial debt of depth uh this debt this of decades to come. This decision deserves the council's due diligence to ensure that we are wisely investing in the city of Solocaga. Uh thank you for your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hyatt, Mayor Hyatt for reading that out aloud to us. Um do any of you guys have anything to say? Um I know it's on the agenda to be re-voted on tonight. Do you have anything to say, or we're just gonna let our um votes reflect our decisions?
For the record, the mayor does not have veto authority over a resolution per Alabama law.
Disagree.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else have any more comment?
I'm just free going on.
Alright, sounds good. We'll just let our um votes reflect our decision. Okay? Number six, discussion that is necessary by the city council to determine capital requests and expenditures to be included in the bond request. Alex, the um, I don't have mine from last time. Is it on my?
She's got it.
Is that what it is?
Okay, and this um and guys, this is the capital request that um we're going to consider once we go to the bond market. So.
Was this the mayor's first?
Hmm, this is the mayor's first. So the goal tonight is that we prioritize this, um take anything off the list, see what's number one and two, add to the list, so on and so forth. So that's what um the goal for tonight is, and it's page two. So, and I guess I'll start. Um I see, and Mayor, this is prioritized, you know, one through fifteen in what you think the importance is, right?
Correct.
This is prioritized from with importance, correct? Okay. Alright, so I do agree with number one and two, paving and drainage. So I do agree that those should be at the top of the list.
I agree with uh number three being the Lake Howard Bridge because we can't pave uh Lake Howard until we get the bridge fixed.
Okay.
And that's, that would be simply using one um cost for the company to get out here. They're already out here doing the paving for the city streets, mobilization costs is what I was trying to think of. So we'd only pay one of those while they're out here paving, then might as well take care of the bridge and hopefully continue on and pave Lake Howard Road as well if we can get the bridge fixed.
Okay.
Do we have any confidence in that number to just a guesstimate?
Um Alex, are these numbers, read, read, who we have to read? Are these numbers um definite, or they um, these are guesstimates?
No, I I don't know about all of them. That's not my property, whatever.
What about for the pavement? Because I know, I think with the pavement, this is probably pretty close though, isn't it? Yeah. And we know too, I think when we do a bond, isn't there a cap on how much we can spend out of bond proceeds for paving? Wasn't it like four million last time?
I think it was. There's a percentage.
Alright. So um I see number four, the city hall waterproofing.
What are the scores of that?
I don't know.
Isn't that something, sorry, isn't that something that Taylor and the court was gonna take in hand, or is that just they were taking this?
I thought it was, I thought it was like some interior stuff that Taylor and the.
Right, I knew that. I didn't know how it definitely.
Yeah, it's a waterproofing, the building, um building services department asked that it be placed on the agenda for the capital list last year. Um the windows are all starting to leak. Um Mike, would you care to elaborate on the waterproofing of city hall?
About ten years ago, we had to complete building waterproofs, including the bridge. The bridge loses its sheen after a while. It doesn't repel water, it absorbs water, everything downstairs in the basement, and then this wasn't a call when the area here was leaking. And after we had that done, it was a quarter of a month ago for a long time, so that's the first time the building had leaked in twenty or thirty years.
So is this a year ago um price, or is this?
Well, that should be apparently current price, but it's a, what they did about twenty thirteen is supposed to be reviewed about every ten years.
And also too, guys, on things like this, if we are gonna consider this an added to the capital list, shouldn't we have some sort of um paperwork? Um some sort of quotes or something? Okay, so you already have those? How many do you have?
Um Mike just provided the one from Summit water.
Okay, so. So is it okay for us to just have one?
And is it feasible? Do we have to do everything, or can we do pieces and smooove some of it out? Mike, Mike, is it something that can be phased, or does it need to be done all at once? Can we stage it over three years, or?
Problem is, if you don't do it all at once, you have a problem. You're gonna have a warranty fight to do everything that needs to be phased.
Okay.
So you need to do it all at one time?
Yeah, it's a dollar, don't do it.
Okay. Alright, so any more questions on number four?
And that's, that's, I'm sorry, is that si- that six fifty is still pretty close, you think?
It's, it's eight more.
So, so why do we have only one quote? Just, I don't know, because we usually get more than one quote for things like this.
Because you don't generally get quotes to budget that much.
Okay. Alright, is that in a number four?
So I guess once we decide their real priorities, we might be harder to work with.
Alright, so number five, um explain this one to me. I thought, I thought we had to, was this something with Alda, or somebody had to determine if we were gonna put a street light out, I mean a traffic light out there, or is this something we're taking upon on our own?
I know we have the traffic.
Traffic, they did the traffic study. So is this something that we're gonna um take and do on our own?
So it's not included as an E D T tax route? This is something we gotta pay for? And Michael Rice is helping us with this also, isn't he?
Didn't we do something because it's a feeder onto two eighty and state highway, something that was connected to that, so? Right, okay.
So, so is this the total, is this the total amount, or is this what you're projecting that we would, the city's percentage, like a match or something?
This amount was the original grade for two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
That's if we were gonna, if the city was gonna do it out of pocket?
It came in higher.
Oh, oh.
So that would more likely be our match.
That's, well, the way he's talking, that's a, that's half.
That's something we need to think about.
But I think it is something that we have to do. So is this something we wanna go ahead and budget for, you know, plan for and hope to get a grant, or?
But then it's, it's, okay, if you're relying on a grant, then that's saying you're not gonna do the bond market board.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't, we, the bond wouldn't gonna come, we got some money for infrastructure and some other things that's already built up. I guess we, yeah, we can get it back in a minute. I'm sorry.
Alright, so, so what I'm asking you guys, so is this staying on the list? Are we taking it off of the list? We're gonna try to figure out another way to do this? Are we gonna have like for the grant, see if the grant comes in, then if the grant doesn't come in, then we prioritize it?
I like that idea.
Then we have, if the grant doesn't happen, we have the infrastructure off the end one.
Alright, I wanna make sure it happens since there's been several options there, yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's see if the grant, see what the grant will cover, and then when they can't cover, then we can help with.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we are, we're all on the same page. If it's something that needs to happen, we'll have to, this is something we'll have to do together. So we're gonna take it off of this list, right?
Yep.
So we're marking it off of this list, okay? So um Alex, question, as we're marking off the list, do you have a calculator with new toes, or are you just gonna add it all up at the end?
I can add it all up at the end.
Alright, sounds good. Okay, number six, Lake Louise Bridge. Mayor, who wants to um, who wants to elaborate on that?
Read.
Read, I'm looking at. And I'm assuming we get lots of traffic and stuff, and this is something that we need to take care of, because I like.
Is that the one going out by uh where Curtis used to live?
Yes, there, there's only one way in and one way out, and it's that.
Read, is that the one, is that the?
Is three and six something that can be done simultaneously while we got equipment on site, or no, since it's not close together? Maybe, I'm trying to see if three and six, is that something we can group together and try to get done together while we have people? Yeah, I'm just asking if that makes sense. So maybe, okay, so we're gonna leave the lake, um oh, and then again with the numbers. When do we get these numbers, Reed? Is this a year ago numbers, or are these recent numbers?
We've only, we've only just looked at this project last year.
Okay.
I know the only thing with the estimates, though, even if we approve this stuff and we say we're gonna do it and we go to the bond market and do it, if we come in low, then we're gonna have to figure out where the rest of the money is gonna come in. I know the goal is, so, so did you es- did you guesstimate high, on the high end?
It's just pretty close now.
Alright. Okay, number seven, the latter's true. And I know um you're here in place of um, is Chief Osgood here?
Just over my phone.
Over my phone, yeah.
I know this is um, are you prepared to answer any questions?
Uh huh.
You're not? Okay.
And this would be an addition to the one that's ordered and or the two hundred thousand.
Okay, so my question was this, so I guess we can go ahead and um talk about this. We need to decide if we're going to buy the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck that they're using now. But my only thing is, if we buy a truck, I don't want it to be, I don't think we should buy a truck to be an extra truck. If we buy a truck, it needs to be one of the two trucks that we plan on buying.
We gotta sell something.
Yeah.
Something's gonna go.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I think whatever truck we buy will be to roll off that nineteen eighty-six to a reserve.
Right, that's correct.
These are like I just told you, I didn't wanna.
He don't wanna, that's what, let's see, let's wait on Nate, and then let's come back to that.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna leave this here, but that's, that's the question, because, but we still need to decide what we're gonna do with the truck, you know, with the other truck. Because if we are gonna buy, we need to be prepared and plan to buy, because we don't want somebody else to buy if we wanna keep it.
That's right.
If that makes sense. So let's um, let's circle back on this one with Nate. Alright, the animal shelter, what's up with the animal shelter?
Animal shelter, she wants to reconfigure his kennels, she wants to paint the walls, add walls, take down walls. Um it's still ninety-four degrees in that facility.
Even after we did the third one?
Yes, ma'am.
Why is that mine?
You're never gonna keep the back of that to a normal temperature, it's gonna be impossible.
Yeah.
It's a wall.
You'd have to do a one hundred percent air exchange in the back of that building.
Oh.
Basically, you're gonna make it ten to fifteen degrees cooler than what it is outside.
So let me actually.
It should be able to be accomplished at the back if there were to be.
Right, it just is what it is.
So even just the part.
You can fill up front or sell it, you know, there's a liquid well outside.
Just don't do that.
So um is that the only part of the building that's still in the nineties? Is the rest of the building cooling?
Like the office.
Inside.
Okay. So, so let me ask this. So this hundred and fifty thousand, is there, is there a list of breakdown? Is there a breakdown list for this? I mean, how, how do we get this number?
We got this number by her calling us and talking to us, um and telling us everything she wanted and everything she, she needed.
So how, so where do we get the number from?
Uh it's, it's just an estimate.
Okay, that's, that's my only, that's my only issue with, with stuff, you know, with, with this. I'm not trying to be mean, but if we are gonna go to the bond market and we want it to be considered, we want it on the list, we need to have some proof, we need to have something in our hands to look at so we can actually consider it. Because you can't consider it without some backup information.
Tiffany, we also need to go to Taldega County and other surrounding communities that are using our animal shelter directly or indirectly, and try to find more funding to help with this. Because it's becoming itself Taldega County Animal Shelter, not just Solocaga Animal Shelter.
And I know she's also over capacity as well. But let me ask you this, if they don't help, can we refuse?
Taldega County does um provide assistance.
But not, but not a lot.
Will um be receiving that agreement um within the next two or three weeks, um working with Pat Lyle and County Commissioner of the Labor Force.
Okay, so what about Mayor? Do you think this is something, maybe you can reach out to the surrounding mayors and try to?
Yeah, we've worked with them before and uh looking at more help from them.
We get a thousand or two thousand or something like that from Chilversburg, we get something from Oak Grove, but.
Yeah, I don't think that's, especially with the bill, we need to come up with a ma- a number of what we're gonna ask for, and this may sound mean, if they don't help, we don't accept them. I mean, because we're, we're overworked.
How can you prove those dogs don't want to them, though? That's the problem. It does. If they put the hot dog out there inside the road, we have no choice.
But aren't we putting, um, don't we have cameras out there or something, and we can see who?
They need to be out there.
Something we need to, yeah, we need to invest in it. We need to get some cameras.
Provide about twenty thousand dollars a year, but they're looking at an increase on that to come next year. We're gonna request it anyway. And it's uh, we'll have to put a animal control vehicle on this budget coming up, because he's got over thirty thousand miles, he got a little vertigin about choked down of a contamination, won't hardly run.
Who did you say contribute twenty thousand dollars a year?
Taldega County.
That's what the corporations have. We started off with ten, then a fellow came in, he kicked it up another ten.
But you know what? But they may say that's for the county, man. Chilversburg is part of the county, so they, they may say that's their contribution. You see what I'm saying?
Chilversburg does not contribute. They have their own animal control office.
But do they have a shelter?
I, I can't answer that, but I know Oak Grove gives us funding as well.
Okay.
Is there, is there an option to get a better building rather than spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this one?
I don't, I think, I think we may need to take this one off and just.
Just for now.
Just come up with a plan, because I mean, we may be able to even.
Hundred fifty something we could probably find.
Buy a building. Yeah, so let's, let's take this one off.
Yeah, we're seven, five fifty right now.
But we still need to prioritize this. So it's coming off the list, but it's still a priority. We just need a plan. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody's in agree on that?
I agree.
Okay. Alright, number seven, uh thirty seventeen West Third Street Roof. What were we looking at? Mike?
West Third Street Roof?
That was the roof when we had an appraisal done, and Mike went and got quotes, and that was for twenty-five thousand dollars to repair the roof.
Is this the building we either need to lease it, fix it, or sell it and fix it? You still gotta fix it where you're looking at it. Is the twenty-five thousand still accurate, Mike, you think?
The original quote was nineteen thousand, and we increased it to twenty-five.
Alright, so. So let's, um, so we're gonna leave this on the list, and we're gonna fix the roof. Let's decide, are we gonna lease the building or put it up for sale to, right?
I say sell it.
I say sell it.
Alright. Okay.
And we can, we can fix the roof until we sell, until it's not to sell.
Yeah, we gotta fix the roof then.
So are we leaving it on the list, or are we taking it off the list?
I think it's at the bottom of the list, though.
So put it at the bottom?
Very, yes.
Alright, at the bottom, so we'll move in number nine to the bottom? Alright. Alright, so on to number ten, the um Isabel Anderson Comer Museum, three hundred thousand.
Yes, we've recently fixed the roof for approximately a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars.
So can that come out of this three hundred?
No, sir. Um this is to fix the rotting walls, um and this is to fix the rotting uh floors that are a hazard over there. Um and.
This came from the old roof problem.
And this is the old roof problem, and now there's mold in the basement.
Yeah.
Um so that's where this is. We don't have any quotes. This is an estimate.
Okay, so I got a question. Is this something where, if there's mold there, then we need to get that taken care of by, I can't, we can't all talk at the same time.
Well, he's like, yeah, hold on, because I got an unpopular suggestion. Alright, you done?
Whatever you tell, I can talk.
You do, go ahead.
Um if there's mold in the bottom, then we need to take care of that the best we can, you know, with Cerro or whatever. But with this three hundred thousand, is there a way we could do like fix the floor one year and then do the walls the next year, or do the walls and the floor, see which one's worse?
I think, I think that um, I keep covering, covering this up, because I'm really loud to myself, I'm sorry. I think the plan is to do everything now because we're going to the bond market, so that way we're not having to plan out of the general fund or out of capital fund. I think that's why, but again, is there a sheet to where this is broken down? So that's, I think that's my concern with everything. I don't have anything to know what's coming out of three hundred thousand.
We have to get contractors to come in and provide quotes and estimates, and if it doesn't stay on the list, no offense. I didn't wanna have to start coordinating all this on one person.
That makes sense. So I do think we need to do this, because I mean now we have a chance to do it. I do think it's um I do think we should prioritize it and leave it on the list. What do you guys think?
I, I agree.
Were there being mold and stuff, were they?
I don't, the insurance, we talked to the insurance company, Missy, and yeah, they're not going to cover it because this is due to the own fault of the city for not fixing the roof in a timely manner. I did address it, though.
Okay, so are we gonna leave this on?
I stop that you have to.
Alright, alright, um number eleven. Okay, so Steve, tell me um, what does number eleven, I know it, I'm looking everywhere. What does number eleven entail? Like, what, what's?
So you'll have to tell me what it says.
It says five hundred thousand. It says um Noble Park and Beth Gates. It says J Craig Community Center, Noble Park and Beth Gates.
So we got a call when this list was put together on getting an estimate on what it would take to basically renovate J Craig Community Smith Center. And uh we didn't have time to do a scope of workers, contractors, or anything. So at our last board meeting, we decided that if y'all were gonna include us in the bond market, we had rather that money go toward replacing old playgrounds. Since we don't have a true estimate to give you for J Craig. Um depending on what you do with the allocated money that was put aside for parking rent, we'll decide on the hipper request is J Craig, and the upper request is Clay.
Okay, so me, I, I don't think this should be on the list, just because there is allocated money. And then even, no matter how we do the resolution, there's still gonna have to be some money um allocated for parking rent because of the plan we have.
Yeah.
So and I think, I think we need to include the parks, we need to include the parks into the, our plan for the allocated money. And maybe we, I don't know, we're just gonna have to see what J Craig leaves.
And just keep them on.
That's the thing, and, and actually, knows our last board meeting, we've already had a new playground design for Noble Park.
Mm-hmm.
Um just that playground is three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. So you know, you're talking about going to the future, do you think that that's gonna be something you can afford as a capital expense in the future? Or is that something you wanna take care of right now with the bond market? Our issue with the playgrounds are, every one of them were done in two thousand and six. We can no longer get replacement parts or anything for any of these slides. So it's something that's gonna have to be addressed, just where y'all wanna get the money from, that's y'all.
I, but I think, I think with me, the concern is, you're saying nineteen thousand for that, but this list says five hundred thousand.
Three hundred, three hundred and nineteen.
Three hundred and nineteen thousand for the playgrounds?
That's just for Noble.
Yes. That is.
That's nothing too extravagant, either.
That is, that is pretty basic stuff.
Let me, so, so what did we do when we went through and did all those updates with the, the hills of the hills?
I love New Seattle.
Yeah, when we, when we spent all that money out there.
See, that's uh, we, we did have to replace a few things on the play structures. But most of the stuff that was written up, the sidewalks, media compliance, um pavilions being painted, and outdated restrooms.
So is this a new, so this is a new design? So you wanna redo the part altogether with the three hundred and nineteen thousand, or this is just?
Just the play structures.
So it's, it's not?
I would say that let's just hold, that let's get through it, and let's see how much money we can actually borrow, and we, we gotta prioritize.
I think, I think this one should.
Not saying that you're not important, we just gotta, we got some movement, we gotta figure out the nuts.
And especially with the plans that we have with parking rent, I think we can include this in our plan, and we may be able to do some of this stuff in phases, if that makes sense. So I think number, if you all agree, we're gonna take the number eleven off?
That'd be fine.
Yes, alright. Alright, so on to number twelve, post office, um historical.
Last fiscal year, it was added to the capital list. Mike did provide a quote, it was nineteen thousand, if I'm not mistaken, and we just added additional funds to it because the price of everything is going up.
So what are we going to the post office?
Uh if I'm not mistaken, I don't know if Mike remembers, I think it's painting, rotting wood, helping with the siding.
Yeah, when you might wanna drop off, like that, some volunteers that's done a lot of this work now. I don't know how much they've done. Nothing would really, didn't need a permit or anything, it was mostly commed it, it's just a protection from it to be a weather.
So this is just basically like some restoration stuff? Yeah, I think so. And then too, um, so we can get a, um, so we can get a better number. So we're gonna move this one to the bottom as well. So number twelve goes to the bottom with number nine. Alright, number thirteen, city um fortunate tap project E D T.
This is something we gotta have, if we go for the last days, we go.
And this is something we gotta do anyway, right? Okay, so this is gonna stay on the list. Alright, um number fourteen, number fourteen, fire department phase two of station remodel. And um Chief Osgood just walked in. We're waiting for you, believe it or not. Um so we're on number fourteen, the um fire department phase two of station remodel. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know why I thought we did this. I always say that when we get to the station two. Did we not do this? Did we?
We, we did, I had broken the concept of facelifting or remodeling the stations into two separate phases to try to keep from being such a single big ticket item. And so we did the living quarters at our station two and the truck bay area at station one, because those were the ones that we did the most. So the phase two was the inverse of that, to do the living quarters at station one and the truck bay at station two.
Okay.
To, to complete matching and facelifting. To, to complete matching and facelifting both stations because they just not had a lot of TLC over the years.
Okay, so, um, let me ask you this, so do you have an itemized list of the costs or, um, and so on and so forth with this?
I, I did, but it's so outdated at this point that we have to.
So you need a new number?
Yeah, okay, so, and it's probably gonna be more than this probably, when, when did you get this number, how long ago did you get this number?
It's one seventy-five.
That was probably, I mean, going on two years ago now.
And I know we've been planning to do this, so, um, it's either we're gonna do.
Without an updated number, it's gonna be added in, it throws our number off.
So how soon did you get an updated number, Nate? Chief?
I can, I can work on that, I mean, as quick as I can, but obviously it takes time to have people come by and look at it and go over everything.
I know, so let's get an updated number as soon as you can, because I do think this is something we wanna do, cause we've been talking about it, as you say, for a long time, and every time we bring it back up, I think we've already done it. So, um, let's get an updated, um, number on that, and we're gonna go back up to number seven because we were waiting on you, it's the Fire Department, um, ladder truck. So, um, tell me, the ladder truck is, is a big, like a regular big fire truck, right? That's what a ladder truck is?
The ladder truck is the one out there with the big ladder on top.
Is it the same as the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck?
No.
What is that truck?
That's an engine or pumper, so di- different trucks for different purposes.
Okay, so this ladder truck, is this the same truck that we committed to buying, is that the same thing?
No, so, so the ladder truck is the one that failed ladder test earlier this year.
Mm-hmm.
We approved the ninety, what, I think it was ninety-eight thousand dollars-ish, I remember right, to fix the aerial component of everything that needed to be touched. But it, that did not do anything with the pump, the valves, the lighting, you know, that kinda stuff, and that, that truck is a twenty-year-old truck. A new ladder truck in today's market would easily be over the one point five million dollar threshold, easily. And so, putting a little bit of money into it just to get it, you know, up to stuff for another fifteen or twenty years would be the goal out of that truck.
This one million on here is to refurbish the one we have?
No.
Okay, now what's this million for?
So you said one point five?
It's to buy a truck.
So, 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 we, we committed the ninety-seven, I think there was about seventy thousand dollar difference between fixing the aerial component and refurbing the rest of the truck. So now, at this juncture, all we need is about that seventy thousand dollar difference to finish the refurb of that truck.
So why would we spend, put all that money into refurbishing that truck and still buy this truck?
The ladder truck is separate, we, we have different trucks that do different jobs on the tire.
Well, let's talk about one truck at a time.
Right, so the ladder truck.
Alright.
Is a twenty-year-old truck, I expect to get twenty years more of life out of it.
Okay.
But it's, it's like a twenty-year-old vehicle, it needs some, some money put into it to give us another twenty years, otherwise we're gonna run it into the ground and it's not gonna last twenty more years.
But, and we're still talking about the ladder truck, so.
Ladder truck, so that's the one that we already committed the ninety-seven to, we need about seventy thousand more, if memory serves.
But, but that's.
This says a million.
Yeah, and that's.
Uh, I don't know where that number came from, that number is having to do with our engines and engine fleet.
This is Fire F D Ladder Truck, so let me, let me ask you this, cause I, I just wanna be clear, so this is on the list? To put the rest of the seventy thousand dollars into the ladder truck we have, or is this to buy a new ladder truck?
We are not buying a new ladder truck.
Okay.
So this needs to be at seventy.
Okay, alright, okay. But we already spent money, we gotta, um, you see what I'm saying, so, when he's saying we already spent ninety thousand in this truck.
Yeah, so that would be, that would be purchasing, uh, I don't know.
So that should be the seventy or whatever to make the whole refurb completely on that ladder truck.
That should be to, to work as far as.
So it's agent not, okay.
Yeah, that should not.
That's why I was.
So that just makes it agent.
Now you see why I'm confused, okay, so, so that seventy thousand, we gotta do that anyway to get the ladder truck.
Uh-uh, we've already committed.
We've already committed that.
You committed the ninety-seven for the aerial.
Yeah, that's what he's saying, but he still said.
But there's a difference there, remember?
That's the, almost to get it a hundred percent.
So, yeah, that, that would be, I, I would say if we're gonna prioritize things, I would say let's look at that in next year's capital budget at this point, because the engines are more pressing, a more pressing issue right now.
Yeah.
And we are, this, um, is this in addition to when we have a board?
Yes, so, 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 I mean, a- as y'all are aware, you know, we, we, we are required to have. Actually, we're supposed to have more engines than we have, but I mean, that's, that's the, the nature of small town fire departments.
Hold on, Nate, before you go in there, cause I wanna talk about that too, I just wanna make sure I'm on the same page with the ladder truck.
Yes.
So we've already committed the ninety-seven thousand.
Ninety, ninety, something like that.
So, but we still, we still need the seventy thousand though, right?
At some point, yes.
Yeah, okay, I just wanna make sure, so, so what list is that on, so when, when is that gonna come up, when are you gonna act with that seventy thousand dollars?
With this next budget.
Okay, alright, okay, I just wanted to make sure, alright, so this is to, um, to buy a fire.
So, so, as y'all know, we have a, an engine, or what we call it, an, an engine or pumper, at both stations, that's our first out truck on almost every single call that we go on. At, at station one and station two, we also have a reserve engine, which we're, we're required to have a backup. As y'all know, last month, we ran into a situation where all three of our engines were out of service at the same time for almost ten days. So, w- we are, we are seeing some effects of having an agent fleet. And, and we're not alone in this, I mean, if you call fire departments up and down across America, we're all, we're all seeing this and dealing with this because. It's one of those things that easily gets kicked down the road and we don't think about it until it's an emergency. So, so what my proposal is, um, Williams Fire Apparatus is located in Ashland. Williams is a great resource, we're using it now as a resource to help get parts and, and that type of stuff. But they service Sutton Fire Engines, that's their brand. So my proposal, they have a used truck that came from a department in Georgia, it was one of their reserve engines, it's an oh-eight model, but it, it only has like sixty thousand miles on it. And it's a, it's a pretty good-looking truck, my, my proposal is to get that truck imminently, immediately. And, and we can get into that truck and have it totally response-ready with everything we need for a cost not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Is that, is that the truck you had, um?
That's the one that was here the other night, now it needs, it needs a little TLC, but that, that not to exceed two fifty, it encompasses all of it.
Okay.
Continue with the purchase that we already have signed the purchase agreement on, again, we've not signed the contract on that truck yet, because we don't do that till we make it to what's called pre-construction, which we will be there in the next couple of months. And that means that they're actually starting to buy parts for that truck and they're actually, you know, actually moving forward in the build process.
How much is that truck again?
That's nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand and some change.
And how are we paying for that truck again?
I just want to just.
So, so, my intent the whole time and what I've been saying is, I would pay for that truck with the earmark tax funding. Now, with us not having received as much as we were anticipated, you know, I may only have seven fifty of it when it shows up instead of the full price, so we, we may have to, you know, discuss the difference. But I'm willing to, you know, from this point forward until that truck gets here to basically, you know, save that money, accrue that money, and let it, let it sit there until the truck gets here and pay for as much of it out of that as we can, depending on how much we receive.
Alright, I'm a little confused on that, Chief, and here's the reason why, because you, uh, you get twelve point five percent of the new tax money, as you're aware.
Right.
And that will bring you to five hundred thousand dollars total once you get, and I know you won't have it upfront, because you're still kinda in the hole right now. So how are we gonna use the new tax money to pay for the fire truck?
The, the understanding and, you know, if, if I missed this at the beginning, I apologize, but the, the understanding at the time that that resolution was drafted, was that that was a recurring annual thing.
That's right.
So, now I know we're not hitting the, the marks that were projected.
Yes.
So, so I've gotta adjust for that, but my understanding was that each year, I would get that money and could save up to help project these long-term projects.
And then, but, and that's why we brought up the resolution last time, because the way the resolution reads is, is not.
So, so if that's not changed, then that money's gonna go to y'all and y'all are gonna have to agree to dedicate it to that.
So I got a question, can we take, can we not, what'd you say the final cost of the fire truck was?
Nine ninety-eight.
Like, can we knock that down any by not build, not, by not putting some things on, or we've taken some things off?
We probably can, um.
Think that'd be a good idea, since we're in a money tight?
What, what I will say is this, I think the things that we can take off.
Yes, sir.
Are going to be so negligible in the grand scheme of things, I mean, maybe, maybe we cut it by fifty, sixty, seventy-five thousand dollars, I don't know. You know, we, we would have to go back and start cherry picking.
Yes.
But, and, and, and that's, again, not that, not that we're unwilling to do that, but the truck was spec'd by our truck committee.
Yes, sir.
To say, this is what we need to serve our citizens the best.
Sure.
So if we start removing those things, all of a sudden you get into that cost versus benefit of, is it worth saving six, eight thousand dollars on this item when it decreases how efficient we can be on the fire ground?
I, I hear what you're saying, but I think it's very efficient for us to make sure we got enough money to pay for the thing. And I know, I know you're aware of that, and I see where you're coming from to serve our community, cause you guys do a real good job, and you just come off a big call, and I'm sure you used everything you had in the tank, but we, we kinda need, if you can't. And I know you can't, you're very smart at this, knock that number down some.
And, and I actually have some paperwork to give to y'all, not to, you know, necessarily sit here and look at it tonight, cause it's a lot of info.
Yes, sir.
You know, for y'all to kinda see what that looks like.
Sure, Nate, there, there's one other thing that I wanted to address, I know the truck committee specified this perfectly according to the needs that y'all face every day, however, I think there's other options. If, if I'm not mistaken, it's Sutton, is that correct?
Yes, Sutton.
It's like a Mercedes Benz of the companies versus a Ford Chevrolet of the companies. And I know, cause I've looked and called and looked around, that there's other, I don't know if you call them, whatever your term is, dealerships, whatever, the factories that make these.
Right.
And maybe some cities back out of their purchase and things like that, and there are ready-to-go fire trucks out there that are brand new that are sitting there, not many.
Right.
But there are some.
Well, so I, I've made some calls, you know, to, to other, you know, vendors in the area, you know, that potentially could, you know, have a, a truck for cheaper and have it within, you know, maybe four to six months kind of timeframe.
But, but, and, and I'm glad you mentioned that, and we have to keep in mind too, so the truck that he pre-ordered, when will that truck be ready?
So, so that truck is projected to show up the first quarter of FY twenty-seven, so the very end of calendar year twenty-six, so two years.
So that's, that's the thing we need to think about too, so, and I'm thinking about it now, if we send him out, you know, kinda like we did the police cars and find a truck, that means we gotta pay for it now, so we gotta figure out how we're gonna pay for it now. And.
Versus saving it up.
Yeah, versus saving it up, you know, we plan to have the money for twenty-seven, that's, that's the issue. So if we, if we send him out to get a truck that's ready to go now, we gotta pay for it now, so we got, we gotta keep that in mind.
So, so, so going back to, to what I really believe is the best option for us for the long term, and that's, that's, that's what I wanna avoid, is a knee-jerk Band-Aid when it needs a tourniquet. Um, and, and so, if we, if we buy the used truck now to help get through the hearing now. And, and then, and then we continue with the truck that we're purchasing, and if we go back and meet with our truck committee and see what we can knock off to save a little bit of money, you know, that, that is what it is. But I don't, I don't think we're talking about bringing it down to, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars, I mean, I don't, I don't think that's in the, in, in, in the realm of possibility with, with this, this plan. And then, in addition to that, include funding for a second new one in the bond proceeds.
I don't think, I, that's the thing, I don't think we wanna do, I don't think that's the plan.
Yeah.
I think, since we've already ordered, this is what I think, and everybody can, um, chime in one at a time, I think we should figure out a way to buy the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck and then plan to buy the new truck that you ordered. And, and then we figure out a rotation on how we need to save and plan to buy trucks in the future, I don't think we need to buy three trucks.
Well, and we've, we've been, we have been saying we're on a ten-year cycle, but it seems as though ten years is stretching a little far. Because we keep running into issues like this, I mean, the, the, the twenty, the, the two thousand fourteen truck that we purchased that's here at station one. W- we were, we, we sold another truck to get it because we were having problems with it, so I think that we really realistically need to be looking at maybe more like a seven-year rotation instead of a ten-year rotation to keep us from getting back here every ten years.
Alex, I got a question, so with the buying proceeds, I know the fire department is in the hole, because we did a lot of things with the pay plan, so what number, or what percentage are they at? Right now, even with them being in the hole, cause we don't know where we're gonna reach the four million, what's left? What's the amount that's left to get to the, um, the five hundred thousand?
A hundred and forty-six thousand dollars from the fire.
So that's all that's.
That's all he's got?
That's all he's, he's got.
So what, so.
Cause we spent the majority of it on the pay plan, but next year, if that can go away.
Yeah, but, but we are gonna, no matter what we decide, what, no matter what we think, we still gotta buy a new truck, we still gotta buy a truck, so.
Because we agree, agreed to it.
Yeah, well, we, we gotta buy a truck anyway, even if we didn't agree, we still need it, we gotta buy a truck, so maybe we should, um, maybe we should consider, no matter how we do the resolution, we're gonna have to save and buy that truck. But I do think we should figure out a way to pay for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck.
And I, you made a good point, I didn't think of it that way, is the two years down the road.
Yeah, cause we, we can plan for it, we can save, and then we may not have to, we make it, cause we, we planned to get.
Right.
You know, cause we.
But, but that, that decision's gonna have to be made at the sign, at the time we sign the contract, which is, which is looming, but.
I know, and that's why I'm thinking out loud too, because we, I don't think anybody was thinking about that, if we go and send you to get a, and I know I'm gonna say this, you're gonna say that there's no such thing as a stock truck, but if we send you to buy a truck off the lot, you gotta have some money, you gotta just go.
That's correct.
So, um, that's something we need to think about once we, um.
So I say, let's just keep our spot in line, we gotta, our agreement or whatever, with the new truck, and then we find a way to pay for the two hundred and fifty thousand.
But no matter how much they have left, it, to get, to reach their, um, twelve and a half percent, there's still gotta be some money for a fire truck. We, some, some money gotta go somewhere to pay for that fire truck, and is there any way we can afford the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck now?
I haven't had time to research it, do other, um, so I'm always.
Okay.
I'm sure there is.
So, when you get a chance, maybe, um, maybe over the next, um, seven days or maybe, so how, how long though, is somebody else in line for this truck, that's the thing too?
Uh, I think we're safe for the moment.
Okay, so Alex, when you get a chance, let's, um, let's see if we can find some money to buy this truck, and we can buy that truck.
Did Ed, I'm sorry, did Ed look at that, what'd he say?
Ed did, Ed did look at it.
He gave the thumbs up?
He did, yeah, that's why, yeah, Ed did look at it, but I think we need to buy that truck and then just keep our name on the list for that other truck, cause then we can, we can plan it.
That's right.
If that makes sense, so this can come off of our list, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Please, Laura?
Y'all agree?
Yeah.
So we're taking this off and we're gonna figure out how to buy the, um.
So are you proposing to take his remaining a hundred and forty-six, subtract it from the two fifty, and that would leave him a hundred and four dollars?
So we have to find that, but the only thing is, we still have to pay for it out of something, so when the rest of that money come in, you'll have to pay it back and the other half's gonna have to come out of, where, wherever you tell us is gonna come out of.
Yes, ma'am, sure.
So you agree with these, that Nate?
Well, I mean, if we don't renew, if we don't renew that, the, the earmark funding annually, then.
But I mean, we still gotta buy a truck, and that, that, we gotta buy a truck no matter what.
Yes.
But we do wanna, we're gonna stand the list for that truck, and we're gonna see if we can afford this, um, two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck. Alright, so next on the, um, list is the, um, so number fourteen, we said we were gonna get some, um, some quotes and itemized lists with pricing. And things that need to be done with the, um, phase two of the fire station remodel, Nate?
Yes, I would agree.
Alright, so, number fifteen, the food row building, I'm a little confused on this one.
I think he's working with it after.
So, so we're.
Kinda up to date the place on it.
So we're gonna take this up, especially since we've been spending money appraising this, alright, so this is coming up. So are we taking number fourteen off, or are we, are we leaving it on?
Let's take it off and let him get the numbers, cause without, cause you're taking these numbers and wanting to plug them in for your bond, but you don't want.
But the thing is, if we take it off, our number goes down, and we don't wanna ask for less money than, than we need, we're gonna ask for a lesser amount.
But yeah, until we get more exact numbers, we don't really know what we're asking.
That's right, and we gotta figure out what we can really afford tonight also.
We're, we're at eight one two, and the double list is ten nine.
But still, some of this stuff is off the list, but it's still on it, because we just need some exact numbers.
That's right.
The stuff that we've agreed to is eight one two.
Alright, so, and then we'll just round up, okay, so is everybody, um, is there anything else that needed to be considered on this list, ma'am? Okay, so is everybody, um, is there anything else that needed to be considered on this list, Mayor? Is this it? Is there anything else that needs to be considered on this list?
No, the rest of the command, no, not next, what's it?
All right. Anybody have any questions about the list? What is that up here? Everybody's good.
I appreciate it. With that paving and drainage, that's, that's important.
Absolutely.
That's at the top of the list, that paving and drainage. All right, okay. So we've done number six. So we'll move on to, it's four-fifty. We'll move on to number seven, discussion that is necessary by different architectural Ryan Cola to discuss proposal to provide preliminary services. Can't read today. Exploration and geotechnical engineering, engineering evaluation with building and earth totaling five thousand five hundred dollars.
So that's a preliminary geotechnical study. This would not keep you guys from having to actually go through the normal geotechnical study that would come during schematic design or design development. Typically, you lay out building, once the building footprint is identified, then you do a geological test at the quarters. That informs the structure on slab conditions or, sorry, foundation conditions and things of that nature. So what you're agreeing to right here would be a preliminary study with test pits. Basically, it comes out there with that big machine that can dig down to fifteen feet, and it can tell you the conditions of the soil at certain depths. That would then inform you if you're at high risk of sinkhole development or your bad soils because there was junk on the side sometime in the past. That would give you that kind of basic information. Now, it would not identify sinkholes. Sinkholes are, I mean, that's a needle in a haystack. You'd have to see a depression in the, in the property and then test it directly to tell you whether or not that's a sinkhole. So the reason too that you would go through this is we sort of put the survey on, on hold for a second. Um, because there was a, there's historical data on the site that needs to be investigated, and I think that's, if you've got historical information on the site that tells you or it makes you suspicious, doing this study is important. I do think that.
And I think so as well.
Thank you, try.
Thank you for, um, coming and explaining this, um, to us.
Hey, the only, the only thing I want to leave you with is, is don't feel like the survey's a waste of money, though. The city owns that piece of property, and you're gonna do something with it, I would assume, at some time in its life. So you will always have a, the survey information to take with you, no matter what happens on that property. So it's not, it, don't consider it a waste of money to.
Yeah, I don't think it is. I think this is just something else on the list that we need to check off before, um, we move forward, especially, um, with the magnitude of what we're trying to do on that property. And also too, this money, um, this is the one that, um, Steve, you said you didn't mind it being paid out of the, um, department rec allocated money. Is this the same thing? It's not. It's not, Alex?
No.
Isn't it the same thing, Ron?
Well, I mean, the, the cost is fifty-five hundred dollars. How it gets paid for and where it comes from.
This isn't what, I think, so this is a, this is an extra study. This is the study that we approved last time. This is a new one.
This is a new, this is a new study.
Yeah, this is a new one. So you know, we approved one last time, but this is one that we need to do before we start getting it something. Yeah, because of the historical data with sinkholes, we're doing this for a common, so we just wanna make sure we have this done before we actually break ground. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And, and don't get upset at me when I come back and we have to do another geological ser- survey, because that's gonna happen. Once the building design and footprint gets, gets, uh, set in stone a little bit, then we have to have a true geotechnical report where they take the soil samples back to a laboratory and give us recommendations.
Specific corners that would be.
On the, on the exact design of the, of the building, correct.
So how long would, um, how long would it take to get this done?
This is gonna be a relatively quick, because there, there's no lab results here, so they're gonna give us onsite soil. I mean, they're gonna do most of the reporting on the property. So you sign that or get it, give me the thumbs up on it, and we can probably get it done in two or three weeks.
And then you'll be able to start the next one after this?
Yeah, and I, yeah, and what I would say is, we need to know whether or not to let the surveyor continue his work. I wish, I wish I could get that kind of direction because we need to get on, that take, you get put on a list, and then they'll get to you when, when they can. But if we, we've taken off the list right now.
Okay.
I say get a survey. Yeah, we gotta have it done, because you know, it's put in, say something changes, you know, it's put in the file.
Something changes and you end up doing a part there one day.
You've got that survey.
That's right.
But this, yeah, and Brian and I talked about this, and I said we needed to add it, it was added to the agenda last minute. I don't wanna.
Get back on the surveyors?
Sure.
Y'all agree?
Yeah, we do. But I wanted to make sure this was added, because this isn't, you know, I don't wanna make any decisions without my team. So we all agree with this?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Ron.
Do you want me to see if the kids are out there?
Um, yeah, we got five minutes. Hold on, we can go to the next one. Um, discussion, oh, well, that one is a lot. Okay.
Judge Horst here, though.
Uh, okay. Judge, you wanna go ahead and go? What number is he?
He is number three on the work session.
Sure.
All right, discussion, we're going back to number three on the work session. So discussion that is necessary by municipal court Judge Taylor Far to update and advise on funding from the judicial administrative fund.
How are you all doing?
All good. How are you tonight, Judge?
Just lovely. Let me show you all this real quick before we get into it.
Oh, it's good. When we came in, though, it was really nice. You see all that? Did y'all tell it was different? Like, it was really nice. It was all bright and new.
So what do we do? Is just add the letter?
Yeah, that's gonna be, that's gonna be, Vanessa. All right, now they're just sticking with a sign in the window.
Yeah, it's taped up too, good.
So we're gonna, we're gonna have raised letters to make it a little more inviting. Yeah, just so, you know, there's some times where people are confused where to go relative to the court. So that should remove all doubts in that regard. But there was, um, four, four things I want to talk to you about regarding the judicial administration fund. One was, um, locks in the doorways of the, of the court. I think this has been done before by Judge Vaughn, um, but it's all systemic from, there was a two thousand twenty-one AG opinion by Judge Bill Pryor. At that time, he was Attorney General. He's now a circuit, uh, federal circuit judge, appeals court judge in the local court. But he issued an opinion, um, at the request of a Edgewell County Circuit Clerk regarding the duty of a circuit court clerk to maintain security of the courtroom office relative to records, et cetera. So, um, that's what we're flying under as far as, you know, the use and, and need for the court in that regard. Just the duty that the circuit clerk has to make sure that that, that department is, is secure because there's obviously sensitive information in there relative to people's cases. You know, people who plead youthful offender, those cases are effectively under seal. Therefore, you know, utmost security is imperative in that regard. So we were going to use judicial fund money, judicial admin fund money to pay for that. Secondly, um, I know y'all just mentioned the new painting outside. As you walk into the lobby of the, of the, uh, building here, we're going to do our first phase of the courtroom, which is the vestibules and hallways entering into it. We're gonna strip this wallpaper and, you know, just re-sand and reconfigure the sheet rock behind it and then paint it the same color as that out there. So we're, we've got a bid. Alex has gotten a bid, um, depending on the condition of the sheet rock behind the wallpaper. It could be anywhere as low as twenty-two hundred dollars to forty-two hundred dollars to accomplish both of these two items as our phase one of what we discussed previously about working up that, the courtroom. And then secondly, I have the municipal court sign above the, above the, um, window out there into the clerk's office. That's a first proposal as far as the layout, what we're looking at doing. I think it'll, um, gain attention for people coming into the court. And kind of be a, be a good directed there. You gotta work up on what it's gonna look like. We're gonna tweak a couple of things, but conceptually, that's what it's gonna be. Haven't gotten a bid yet on what that's gonna cost or estimate, but that too, obviously, will be paid from the judicial admin fund as a benefit to the court. And then fourth, um, there's a micro countertop at that same window. And we were thinking that, I talked to Philip Morris at, uh, Morris Marble Slab, I believe, is another company out there by the airport. But I was wanting him to get a quote on, on doing it. It's out, he told me it's Alabama white marble is what the, what the walls are in here. And I thought we could do that with marble slab without countertop going in, you know, at the window to make it, make it match the, the rest of the building. So all that's been at the court, judicial admin money, the money's there to do with, to, to handle those, those improvements. So with that, I just wanted to more or less kind of advise you all of that. If you had any questions or concerns, happy to answer any of that.
Were you still planning a multimedia systems upgrade project or is that?
That's, that, that was our second phase of this. That'll be part of this. And you, you're talking about it here.
Yes.
I mean, ideally, and we're kind of in the early stages of planning that out, I would say I'd like to see you all guidance as well because it will be multifunctional. You all have the benefit of it as well as the court. Um, I know that there's situations in court where evidence needs to be displayed, um, with a big screen to allow, you know, prosecutor, defense counsel to, to exhibit that particular evidence. So I think that'll be a good thing.
Judge, does any of this need counsel approval with your numbers? I know the, the judicial funds are kind of, it's a very gray area there. So could you?
Judicial admin money is simply for the use and benefit of the court.
Right.
My, my, my role as the judge, I feel is proper and, and, and the right thing to do to come to advise you all of what's going on.
Instead of just do.
Correct.
I got you.
So it doesn't need to be voted on or anything?
It, it is not, and I don't mean to waste your time. I just wanted to come let y'all know what we're.
Oh, no, we're.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm just curious because I know there's some gray there.
Yeah.
One more thing. Your, the judicial funds are kind of put in our general fund, correct?
That is correct.
Does that need to be separated?
Well, we, here, here, there's a backstory on that too. And obviously, this, this, this month, July, will be a year in, in this role for me. And, um, you know, there's been a big learning there relative to some of this in terms of the management of things other than just court. But Alex and I actually met with, um, with, um, tell me the name, lady we met with.
Melanie.
Melanie, um, last week, and she kind of broke it down for me, because I wanted to see it, how it was compartmentalized in the general fund. I checked with other cities. They do similar things, because that was mine that was thought was, let's separate and separate it, so.
So you, you like it the way it is? You wanna separate?
Judge Vaughn initially wanted that done, and then if he was to do that, all of the checks and everything had to be written from by the court. Because that money, every, every dollar that's brought in has to go to like twelve different places.
I guess, so it's better to keep it the way it is.
But that's, but that's why I'm confused.
Seventeen?
But that's, but that's why I'm confused. But isn't the, um, the school system setup something like that too? And we still have to approve them spending their money since we manage it, it's coming out of our account?
They just ask for it.
So we don't have to, we don't have to vote on it? Okay.
Yeah, it's, but anyway, I think the way it's working, I'm, I get monthly reports of that account, what comes in, what goes out. That way I can stay on top of it, and I think the way it's set up now is the most efficient way to do it. So.
It is a separate line item.
It is a separate line.
It is. It, I, I think, I think we're good there. But I just wanted to come advise you all, that's all.
Thanks, Judge.
Appreciate it. And we'll go to number, um, two on the work session agenda. Next on this is, um, there's a presentation from Ben Robbins to the lifesaver family. And I think Alex is gone to, um, get him, and he'll be in shortly. And I know this has been a lot. Everybody's been sitting, so we will take a quick bathroom break and then, you know, five-minute bathroom break and then come back for the work session to finish, because we do have a few things on. Hey, Mr. Roberts, how are you tonight?
Good, how are y'all?
Good.
Senator Kelly?
How are you?
Good, and you?
Doodle-ay-doodle-ay.
You too, as always.
I have to say, um, the pretty lady beside you is kind of just really a little bit of a doll.
She usually does.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. And we got some more people coming in. We gotta get seated. Then once everybody gets seated, you guys can start whatever you like. And hey, so, say hello to you. How you doing?
Y'all doing good?
Yeah, how about you?
Y'all all looking good?
We tried. Okay, ready when you guys are.
So, um, I'm Senator Keith Kelly, Representative Robbins is here as well. And we're here on a very special occasion, somewhat beside occasion, a special occasion. And we have a couple of resolutions, uh, to honor those that have lost their lives, given service to those of us that need it at different times. And they live that life of service, so I'm gonna read you the Senate resolution that we're giving to each of the families of those that lost their lives in the helicopter crash. And no greater love as man gave than to give his life for his fellow brothers and sisters. You know, the good Lord tells us that we're here to serve others. And these two names we're gonna discuss today or mention today gave that ultimate sacrifice for us and many others. And so many times we take things for granted. And, uh, you know, this is one of those times when we're reminded that the true cost of what it can be, not just in human life, equipment, and families that are loved here. And, uh, when I read this resolution, then Representative, uh, Robbins will give another resolution of something else that we're doing. So this resolution is from the Alabama Senate mourning the deaths of Mark Gann and Samuel Adam Russell. Whereas it is with profound sorrow that we note the passing of Mark Gann of Silicaga, Alabama, and Samuel Adam Russell of Hanover, Alabama, on April second, twenty-twenty-three during the commission of a life-saving effort. And whereas Mr. Gann and Mr. Russell were dispatched to rescue a hacker in Shelby County with a lifesaver helicopter crash near the intersection of County Road Forty-three and Mountain Oaks Drive, tragically killing Mr. Gann at the site and Mr. Russell passing later at the hospital. And whereas Mark Gann, sixty-three, served more than twenty years in the United States Army as a helicopter pilot and as an army ranger. He joined the lifesaver crew in twenty-twenty-seven, I mean, two thousand seven. He worked with the Oak Grove Volunteer Fire Department for seven years. Mr. Gann leaves behind his wife Brenda and three children, Kelly, Craig, and Holly. And whereas Samuel Adam Russell, forty-three, was a part-time firefighter for the Silicaga Fire Department for more than fifteen years, as well as a paramedic and a registered nurse with the lifesaver. Mr. Russell leaves behind a wife, Tamara, and sons Dylan and J.D. Stevens, Jesse Langford. And whereas although their presence will be greatly missed, the memories of Mr. Gann and Mr. Russell will be cherished by all those who knew and loved them. Now therefore, be resolved by the Alabama Legislature of both houses, therefore concur that the deaths of Mark Gann and Samuel Adam Russell are recorded with deep sadness. And this resolution is offered in tribute to their lives, along with heartfelt sympathy to their families and whose grief is shared by men. And this is signed by Patrick Harris, Secretary of the Senate, and Will Ainge, or the Lieutenant Governor. So at this time, I would like to present this to you. We have the other one, that, that individual's not here, but we'll get that to you.
And I'm gonna reiterate what Senator Kelly said about what this means and why we're doing it in terms of people that, individuals that are willing to give their lives for us, we should always recognize and always remember. And with that, this past session, we passed another resolution, uh, that I'll, I will read. It says, uh, naming the bridge on U.S. Highway Route Two-eighty that spans Alabama State Highway Route Twenty-one in Silicaga, Alabama, the Adam Russell and Mark Gann Memorial Bridge. Whereas it is with the highest accolade that we honor the memories of Adam Russell and Mark Gann by requesting the Department of Transportation designate the bridge on U.S. Highway Route Two-eighty that spans Alabama State Highway Route Twenty-one in Silicaga, Alabama, as the Adam Russell and Mark Gann Memorial Bridge. And whereas on April second, two thousand three, Mr. Russell and Mr. Gann lost their lives during the commission of a life-saving effort with the lifesaver helicopter they were in crashed during the intersection of County Road Forty- with the lifesaver helicopter they were in crashed during the intersection of County Road forty-three and Mount Oaks Drive in Shelby County, Alabama. Shelby County. And whereas Mr. Gann served more than twenty years in the United States Army as a helicopter pilot and army ranger before joining the lifesaver crew in two thousand seven. He is survived by his wife Brenda and their three children, Kelly, Craig, and Holly. And whereas Mr. Russell was a part-time firefighter for the Sulagaga Fire Department for more than fifteen years, as well as a paramedic and registered nurse for the lifesaver, he is survived by his wife Tamara and their sons Dylan, J.D. Stevens, and Jesse Langford. And whereas it is a proper and fitting tribute to acknowledge the devastating tragedy of these two gentlemen who died in service to others. Now therefore be resolved by the Alabama, by the Legislature of Alabama, both houses thereof concurring that to honor Adam Russell and Mark Gann, the Department of Transportation is encouraged to coordinate with local governing officials to consider designating a bridge on U.S. Highway Route two eighty that spans Alabama State Highway Route twenty-one in Sulagaga, Alabama, as the Adam Russell and Mark Gann Memorial Bridge, and erect appropriate signs or markers consistent with applicable requirements and laws in recognition of this designation. In witness whereof, I herein two set my hand and have caused the great seal of the state of Alabama to be affixed by the Secretary of State Wes Allen of the Capitol and City of Montgomery of the State, the fourth day of April of twenty twenty-four. Signed, Governor K. Ivey. I don't have a frame yet, but I have. I just want to say thank y'all to council for, uh, letting us do that and being a part of it. And y'all have a part to play in getting signs erected, so thank y'all for everything that y'all did. Thank y'all's involvement in this process too.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you so much. And thank you guys for coming out to tonight and letting us be a part of that, we appreciate it. Thank you. All right, so we'll, um, we'll go on to number four of the work, work session agenda. It's discussion that is necessary by Madison Likes regarding special event license for Fall Festival twenty twenty-four, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is, um, is Madison here? Madison? So we'll just, um, we'll just skip this one, we'll come back to it at the end, just in case she walks in while we're, um, we're doing something else. Just remind me that we skipped this one, okay?
Okay.
So that we want to make sure people are working on this. All right, so what's next on here, number nine?
Eight.
Number eight, act discussion that is necessary by the Director of Park and Recreation. Steve, matches on reallocating a percentage of earmarked funds for the newly proposed master recreational facility, including staffing salaries, maintenance, furniture, and utilities. And Steve, I think the last time you and I talked, um, we talked about, I guess, a lot of things and to try to see if you could, um, come up with a plan, or maybe we all would just try to come up with a plan and try to basically assert percentage towards that because even though there are some allocated funds now, there are a certain percentage of that needs to go to the new facility because we basically need to have some money saved up when it's time, when it's time to open, we want to go ahead now and start being proactive. So do you have a proposal or a plan?
Uh, I mean, we can't really put numbers together as far as staffing and stuff until we know exactly what we're building.
So what, so, but we still need to, we still need to have something going somewhere. And I know we all got the, um, the work session agenda, and hopefully it was all on all of our minds. So we need to try to, hopefully we can come up with a number to just start going somewhere into a special account for the new facility, and we can adjust it, um, if we need to, if that makes sense.
Like, like, um, Fire Chief was saying, like, when this happened originally, we thought this was going to be an annual thing. Um, we got together as a board, and one of our board members are here. We talked about what our capital needs over the next few years were going to be. Um, obviously, like I've already mentioned, playgrounds, number one. I mean, that's probably one of the most used things that we do in Sulagaga Parks and Recreation. So we had made plans going forward to use that money to do something for the general public, something that would affect the most amount of people. Um, now we found out that that's not an annual thing, so it's going to be basically a one-time, four hundred thousand dollar thing. So, you know, I, I don't know going forward how we're going to, are we supposed to come to y'all with capital projects such as playgrounds and stuff like that? And you're going to bank this money for a one-time payment toward a rec center?
Me, and this is just me, and that's why I'm asking the question, so everybody get a chance to chime in. This is different, this is different, because we don't want to end up in a situation to where we are now with, you know, um, community centers not being active, you know, we're trying to play catch-up, um, doing, you know, reopening parks, buying playground equipment, and so on and so forth. So with this one, we want to try to start off on the right foot, so to speak, that's what I'm saying. So I think, um, we need to come up with a certain percentage that's even out of his allocated money to start going somewhere. But no matter how we do the resolution, when it's budget time, that percentage still needs to be going into an account for the new recreation center.
We may have to add to that.
Yeah, we may have to add to it, but we still like, I think we need to start somewhere today. So money needs to start going there today, if that makes sense.
It, it does, I'm just worried capital needs going forward, just like every other department it is. Um, as you know, we took fifty-two, I think, Alex, for salaries out of the allocation.
Yes.
Um, y'all spent, or told us to spend four hundred dollars for the All-Star team.
We took twenty-two out of the allocation.
Twenty-two out of the allocation?
Twenty-two.
So what's our current balance of allocated money?
Hundred seventy-four thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty-two cents, that's minus the four hundred dollars already.
And then as far as capital projects, I would hope that, uh, as long as I've been here, I think we, we've pretty much prioritized capital projects to the best of our ability, and you can see with the capital list we have now, we have been taken off, off the list, so.
But you removed us from that list, right?
Yeah, we removed that because we're building a new community center, that's removed from the list. But the stuff with the parks and stuff, that stuff is going to still have to be done, but we're going to have to, to have an itemized number. But you wanted to put some money into J. Craig, and it was, well, I mean, I didn't have anything in front of me to see what exactly you were trying to do.
That, that was not a park and rec decision. We were given a call that it was on the mayor's list and to come up with a number.
And even you said that you just came up with the number, so that's why I was removing.
You know, we, we were asked to have that number at lunch that day and by the meeting that evening, so.
So that's not even a number to plan about, yeah, so we're going to.
So we had our next board meeting, we had the discussion about that, and we decided our biggest priority was playgrounds instead of J. Craig. So instead of if y'all went to the bond market for parks and recreation, so instead of that going to a new rec center, we already have an official quote to build that playground in Noble Park. So we would want to change those things out if you went to the bond market for parks and recreation.
Okay, but as far as this one with number eight, I know I keep saying this and I hope I'm making sense, it's different.
You're making sense, it, it's just, so you know historically, we've had Church of the Highlands rent coming in, and that is soon leaving us, we're, we're pretty much factual on that. Um, and we've used that money in the past to do all of these renovations to every park that we've had. Um, that income's around seventy to seventy-two thousand dollars a year. So if we can keep at least, let's call it seventy-five due to inflation, of this money to put aside for all of those projects that we don't have to come to y'all every time for capital money, and we can continue to make those kind of improvements, what you do with the rest of it is, I guess it's up to y'all.
Okay, well, make sure that's a part of your budget, um, your budget request when it comes, uh, when are we, um, scheduling that?
They're due Monday, right?
So just make sure that's a part of your budget request, um.
Another thing that's going to help is if we, we make a declaration of, are we going to roll with that being that was a one-time thing? Are we going to redo or make another resolution stating that that percentage of new tax money is an annual thing?
I know, but I thought that's, we decided to decide that at budget time, because we're not at the four million now anyway. So, you know, we still have some time, and I thought that was going to be a part of our budget discussion. But what I'm saying now is, we have all these plans to move forward to build a recreational facility, but we're not planning forward. That's, that's what this is for. Yeah, we're, yeah, we're not planning forward, so we can't just open up a facility and operate on the current budget we have now. So we gotta have some money banked, that's what I'm saying.
And, and that's understandable, but like Captain was saying, uh, I mean, Chief, sorry, sir, that we thought this was an annual thing. So while the rec center was being built, we were going to use that allocated money to take care of the, the playgrounds and the parks, knowing that once this center opened, that money was going to go into budgets.
But you still weren't able to do that, because just like all of us have said, we haven't reached the goal as.
Oh, I know, yeah, our reaction was well.
Yeah, but you, I know, but the plan changed, because we thought we were going to be further along than we are and we're not.
They're on the same ship as us, we're just changing gears right now.
I know, but that's why we're here today, so we can come up with a new plan, so we need a new plan now.
And that's the thing, I mean, we went from just learning, I guess, a couple council meetings ago that it's not annual to, you know, now the, the numbers aren't reaching, but we're going to keep, we're still going to keep the resolution of, we're, we're definitely getting four hundred thousand out of the deal, so there's been a lot of numbers floating around, a lot of projects, you know, that we're trying to go for but can't do, and, you know, we, we've now got allocated money that you're saying we're not going to be able to spend because we're going to bank it for our department. And I'm all for the new rec center, and we need to pay for that thing anyway, that's best for the city, but when you come up here and you say, what percentage do you want to give up? I need to know, first of all, what are we building?
Okay, let's, let's do this, maybe, let, let's start over, let's do this, let's do some research, um, let, let's wait until we see what we're building, let's do this. Let's wait and see when these, um, geo-tech things come back and all this and that, and we work with the architect and tell him what we want him to build, and then you just do some research on what, I mean, we all had the presentation, there was a presentation. So maybe we can do some research based on what rec centers operate on.
Is the end of phase two, when we have the official schematics and we're ready to know what we're going to be feeling, what we're going to be paying for, how many staff we need for this next one.
Okay, so, so when, so when is phase two going to be done? Because I think y'all were confused by what I'm saying, so, so how long does it take phase two to, um, be completed? Nine months, so in the nine, but I'm, but what I'm saying is, in the nine months, we should still be saving, that's what I'm saying. If that makes sense, if, if you disagree, then.
I, I have a question, we haven't said how much money we're going to spend on what we're building.
We had, that was, that's, we had a presentation, everybody was at the presentation.
So are we going to take out a forty million dollar bond and then start?
I'm, 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 that's what I'm thinking.
Because, because, timeout guys, because we haven't even heard, we've heard what these numbers are going to be. No, I'm just talking about for the bond in general, but we haven't heard what we can afford, what we can't afford. We've just got numbers kind of floating around.
But that's, but that's why we prioritize this list and.
That's what the boss of the company wants to deploy.
The, the community center and the one and two number on the list, those are the priorities. That's why we prioritize this list, so we can't have a, a dollar amount, and those are just guesstimates. Those aren't, those are just guesstimate percentages, those aren't hard percentages.
Third-party company, when we start working with them, we want to rely on all of that, but it's just like we did when we took out the.
So, okay, I got a question, what did you get the, say we do, say we end up doing thirty million dollars, and they come in and finance goes, guys, you knew that, but you ain't, you're going to be in a tire, you're going to be in a car. Then we're going to have to go back and cut some more.
But that's why we.
Because we hadn't cut anything yet, I know we.
But that's why we prioritize, so we'll know what's going to come off the list.
So we got number six, five, and four.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that, that's what, that was the whole point of us prioritizing the list. So we know we want to do all these things off the list, but based on what we get and the percentage we get with the payout and so on and so forth, some of these things, you know, they may not make on the list, and they'll have to be added to the capital list.
Okay, that's it, let, let me, let me do it this way, then to make sure I understand. So for the rec center, how much is the rec center?
What was it, twenty-eight?
Was it twenty-eight, eight?
It was twenty-eight to thirty-two.
To build what they show.
Yes.
That doesn't leave you but two million dollars to play with to take out a thirty million dollar bond. That, guys, don't, that math ain't math.
That was the thirty million that's not included.
So here, here, here's what I'm saying, let me go this way, say you're taking out thirty, okay? We've already got some money set aside as a paving account, and the infrastructure account, and the debt service account. We can take some of that money, and we don't have to take out this big bond. I want, let me be clear, I want a rec center bigger than anybody. I've been in parks and rec my whole life, but I also want to be able to afford it. So in my mind, if we can use some of this money we've already got in the bank from our tax revenue, then we don't have to take out that big of a bond, and you can still build what you can afford, make your payments. And if you have an emergency, you can take care of that too, does that make any sense?
It does, but keep in mind, remember, with, with some of the accounts and with the bonds, there's certain things that, you know, you can spend these certain amounts.
Paving, you can spend it on paving, infrastructure, you can spend it on drainage. The reserve account that will have, uh, three hundred thousand dollars in, you can spend that on whatever you see fit. Sidewalks, more paving, whatever, you don't have to take out that big number.
Yeah, but keep in mind too, the money that we have, Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, I know some of the money that we have and is considered paving is for concrete streets, because we can't do any concrete streets with the bond money.
It was just considered paving, we didn't define what paving was.
But aren't you also looking at these, as in maybe one or two billion that we have in the bank? Versus like what he's saying, if we have that money to take out and make for these things and not go to the bond, add that to the bond market money? You're looking at one or two billion of savings, is it, you want to play? If you take the money we already got in the bank for paving, infrastructure, debt service, so that would, it's not like it would be an extra ten million, it would be one or two, correct?
Correct, depending on what you guys decided, and then you have to add all the interest on top of that.
Right.
I guess my concern is, we don't have an amount for Steve to figure out what he wants to build. We don't have an amount for these capital projects. We approved one point one million in additional funds for payroll, and every year that's going to go up two hundred and fifty thousand. So in four years, that price is going to go up, yes, certainly, a million. Um, we're talking about a new fire truck, the lease cars.
That's why I was saying, taking this money that we will have from the, uh, first four billion, and you don't have to borrow it that much. Well, you still get what you want, but you don't have to borrow that much money because you're using the money you already have.
But we can't take the money from the first four million because it's, it's allocated to certain departments, so they still, I'm talking about for the paving.
Yeah, I think what Nate's saying is, there's earmark money for paving, there's earmark money for capital.
Okay, all right, so, so let's do this then, so what's in the paving account now?
But it's all going to be blended, because the source is not going to be just bond proceeds, we're going to mix it all together depending on where it needs to come.
And then too, you don't want to delete these accounts, because in the future, once we do this paving program, there's going to be some small paving that we're going to have to do and we can pay out of these accounts.
But then it'd be, it's being your general fund, and that's when you roll it over to capital, and you can pay it for out of the capital. Because once you get, and once you get this completed, further resolution, it's over, everything goes in the general fund, and then you start.
Well, fifty percent goes into the general fund, fifty goes into.
Right, that, that's just something that I was thinking about over the weekend, and I called her, Steve, we'll get to you in just a minute, that I was talking, I heard about today that I thought about over the weekend, and I thought it'd be a good idea to bring up tonight.
I know, but this is what I'm saying, we spent the money to get these people to do all these things and these presentations and drawings and this and that. I was under the impression that the twenty-eight, what, the twenty-eight million was the number, and that we were going to cut, you know, it was going to be for other stuff, a question made, and cut on the size of a room and so on and so forth, but, I mean, that, that was the goal, that's why we went through all these processes, that's why we spent all this money, because what they showed us, that's what we're building.
Well, to be fair, like, when these conversations started with Chainless and King over two years ago, we've asked for a budget every time, and we've never been given a budget.
But, but when it also came in at that really, really high amount, you went and scaled it back, and you brought us the twenty-eight million, but we were all in the presentation, and I was under the, under, under the impression that we were all on the same page, and this is what we wanted to move forward with, we were building, we were building a twenty-eight million dollar facility. So we know, right, am I?
Yeah, yeah, I agree, we, I, as long as we can afford it, I'm good, but we're going to take out one bond and then spread the money out. But we haven't, we don't know the number, the final number.
But this, you also don't know it on this, um, the other sheet, you also don't know what the, um, interest rate is going to be either. So all this stuff is guesstimates.
But we also don't have a real number until the. But we also don't have a real number until the architects finish the plans and design, we may have to move things around and change.
What I'm telling you guys, just like last bond that we took out, the, I don't know, the official, the bond company that we hired is going to guide us through all this as well. And that's a major part of it, that's the expertise that comes in, is the bond company.
I know, but everybody needs to stop saying we don't know what we're, we're, we're building, because we know we're building twenty-eight million dollars worth of stuff.
I hope and pray.
That's what I'm saying, so we need to stop saying that, we do know what we're building, right?
It was presentation.
So it's the presentation, there's multiple, multiple times.
Okay, so that's what we're building.
Well, it's what we want to build.
If we can afford it.
And, and, okay, all right, so, so how do we get to, um, get to a number, because these numbers are gonna change anyway, but we still have to have something to give to the consultant to go to the bond market, because we wanna get the process, the ball rolling, we don't wanna.
Are we back to me?
I think so.
Um, so what I was gonna say originally is, we haven't spent as a parking rec board, any of our allocated money whatsoever.
Sorry, we, I, we were discussing.
We haven't spent any money whatsoever, we haven't asked for any of those funds, we were letting those funds build until we could afford to do big projects. So if y'all wanna decide how we're gonna pay for those big projects, as long as we keep that seventy-five thousand that we're losing from Church of the Highlands, we're good.
And that means you don't come back and ask for any of the stuff.
That means I don't come to you every day and say, we got a five hundred dollar swing that went down, things like that.
But we still, but do you understand what I'm saying?
I'm saying, we need to make that hit some money, and I don't wanna halfway do this rec center, and I don't wanna not be able to furnish this rec center, and we need to save every dime we can to get there. But we can't, we can't have tunnel vision on this rec center, because we still have all of our day-to-day activities and all of our expenses that we have to maintain.
Yeah, but that's, but that's in a separate, but that's in a separate budget, but also, once it's completed and we open the doors, it's just gonna, it is gonna become one budget.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, it is gonna become one budget, that's what we have to realize, so we can't, we can't go out here and build this facility and still think we're gonna operate on the money you get now, you're not gonna do it.
I, and I agree with that, but I mean, also, since this is a one-time allocation, once again, it's not year to year, then that allocation's not gonna start building up in October, so, I mean, we're talking about something that's fixed at the end anyway.
So are you proposing that we don't touch the money now and then in a bunch of time, once we decide what we're gonna do with the resolution, just allocate some money towards it, is that what you're proposing?
I, these are y'all's decisions.
They are our decisions, but you're, you're the person in charge of.
Right, I mean, bottom line is, we've got to replace at least four playgrounds within the next five to six years. However, y'all wanna fund that is, is y'all's decision. We had planned to do it with allocated money, since, like, as soon as y'all said, we're getting ten percent, four million.
You started.
We did the math, we've got quotes on playgrounds, like, we are ready to move forward on playgrounds.
So is this something that also needs to be considered in our own budget in October then?
Then he may have to do it one a year.
Well, that was our goal, it's like, if, if, if you were gonna do that half a million, we could do Beth Yates another one.
I just hope we can, I just hope we can afford all this.
Well, I mean, that, that's, that stuff, we're gonna have to keep the parts, so we have to do that stuff.
That's right.
So this isn't new stuff, so are we just gonna table this until, um, until budget?
At the end, until we get a, a bond company on file, on retaining, under contract with us or whatever, so they can have the same.
Okay, but I was thinking, and, and y'all did correct me if I'm wrong, I was thinking the number was forty million. That, this whole time, that's what I've been thinking the number is, based off the presentation and the list, that's what I've been thinking the number is.
List, yes.
That's what I've been thinking the number is.
Well, if we took that list at ten million and did everything, then yes, it would be. But that's why we just prioritize it, because that list is up in the air depending on what we get from the bond market and what the interest rate is, then we can start cutting. If we can't do that, that's why we just prioritize it.
We just started at the bottom, we may not need to borrow, we may have enough coming in that can fund some of the two.
That's what I just.
Yes, y'all are definitely talking in circles, yes.
It seems to be that way.
Thanks for your help.
So, so, I'm sorry, last thing, we, we need a playground, it's three hundred nineteen thousand, you can leave the allocation alone, we can pay for it there, you can take the allocation and bank it for future, and then eventually that'll come out of capital, because as I understand, once you've done with the allocation, then you're doing fifty percent capital, fifty percent your own fund, right? So as long as you're considering us in the future on that capital money to replace the playground, we're fine, we'll have y'all to do.
Thanks, Steve. So, I have something, so going back to payroll. So if we were to do a thirty million dollar bond over thirty years, payroll's gonna end up creasing, increasing by seven million by the time we end up paying off this bond.
Payroll's also gonna increase too, because once we build the facility, we're gonna add new people.
Correct, so how is our revenue stream going to increase? Because if the revenue doesn't increase and all this is increasing, we're gonna have a problem with this.
There was a list of things that Steve was supposed to consider and research on helping bring some revenue, and I know there was some, um, things about maybe.
Well, the CDA's got a lot going on as well for future revenue coming into town that cannot be talked about right now, under contracts.
And we've, and we've got, whether we like it or not, we've got, we've got people leaving also, we have to look at that, we gotta look at everything. So we need to have a meeting just for that. Okay?
Again, once we find them, get a bond company, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend a meeting with them to talk about all this.
But we also have to make sure we're looking at the economic impact of building these facilities, which will again self-replenish the things that are, that we're talking about doing.
All right.
Good job.
So number nine, discussion that is necessary by city clerk treasurer Alexandria Lambert to enter into a maintenance agreement with Ameritech for printers, May, from May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four through May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. Is, um, fifteen, I don't even know how to read this.
One point five cent.
One point five cent per copy includes structural maintenance.
That's correct, um, Ameritech, we are, um, transitioning to Ameritech from Rico. Um, we have not entered into a contract, however, we did, um, sign agreements. We called the Alabama League of Municipalities and a contract is considered an agreement. I was unaware of that, um, several departments as well were unaware that they were not authorized to sign an agreement. Um, so we are asking the council now to ratify everything that the city clerk has signed, um, and the mayor, um, and we will have to come back to the council for departments that have been signing as well. And I did talk to Rob Johnson of the league, and he said this is a common misconception. That the two are hand in hand, because when I did read, um, the mayor and council handbook, it talks contract only, it does not mention agreement at all.
And this is, um, and this is something that has taken place in not only your department, but some of the others as well.
Yes, code, fire, E and L.
And since we, we had a situation, um, to come, um, up recently, that we had to get put on the agenda to be voted on, we, we went back and seen that we had agreed to do some other things that we didn't know had to come before council, so we're kinda playing catch-up.
I don't, I never remember seeing any agreements since I've been elected.
Well, I haven't either, but it, it has come up and it does need to come before council.
Okay.
But it's all of our departments, and I mean, we're already utilizing these services and using them, so we just need to make sure.
Sure.
We're aware of whatever changes and they do, um, get approved, if you don't agree, then we just let your vote reflect your decision. But it's gonna be a few of these probably on the next few council meetings, from, um, from new, new ones.
This is business we have to handle, nobody new, common mistake, thanks for catching it and fixing it.
And thanks for, um, getting the list of all these too, so we can make sure we get all of these taken care of, and now just keep reaching out to the department heads, so they can, um, reach you a list of whatever agreements they've entered into, so we can get on the agenda to be approved as well.
There you go. And Ameritech's here, I forgot any questions.
Ameritech is here, you got Mr. David Burrows, Brent Pennell, and, um, Galen. They're over there, if anyone has any questions on any of these items.
So I see it, so one is for printers, the other one is for, um.
We bought the printers out of everybody's budget, printer for E and L, the police department, and accounting and finance, um, and we did sign an agreement for the maintenance, which is free ink, um, and maintenance and repair, um, and if you looked at the cost of replacing ink, it's outrageous. But they are, are gonna take care of that for us.
So number nine and teen are, um, for Ameritech? Yeah, and a number eleven.
But number eleven is the date correct, so we're authorizing something that's already been done, it's just be twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five?
Eleven, um, yes, we did sign an agreement for Ameritech, part of that was for the computers, which the council did authorize when we purchased the computers, I did say at that time that we were gonna have to hire somebody to install.
Included the upmanship.
We did.
Yes.
Ameritech is forty dollars cheaper than, um, the competitor who was getting ready to increase the cost per hour. Um, in addition, yes, uh, Mr. Goodman, the date is over, however, um, we have not spent one hour with Ameritech's services as of yet. So the agreement we signed, yes, was for Ameritech to conduct services from May twentieth to June seven, or June second.
So that was gonna be the setup?
That was going to be the setup and all that, but we have not expended not one hour, um, Mr. Burrows, would you like to add anything?
What we've done is we actually absorbed that cost, um, it's on it, so we've actually been investigating, interviewing, uh, current employees, you know, about the setup and the network here, um, gotta figure out just a little bit, I've had it in cash check yet for a block of hours, so we've had on, we've had absolutely everything, so we just kinda work it out.
Ms. Lambert, the accounts payable list that we're to approve tonight includes a payment to Ameritech for nine thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars and twenty-one cents for IT support, is that not related? Shows check to be issued Ju- July second.
Oh, that's correct. Yes, they invoiced us, yes, but they have, we have not used any hours.
But all these, back to what I was saying, over the, um, next few agendas, it's gonna be a lot of these on there that are, um, gonna be backdated, because the department heads, nobody was aware that you had to have agreements approved by the council, and I've never done this, um, since I've been here, do you remember us doing agreements?
Yep.
I don't remember.
But we, but we're going to need to see those agreements and read them, not just say that they're approved.
Yes, sir, all those were provided on Friday, every one of the Ameritech agreements were provided yesterday, and all the other agreements, Lewis, Critter, Gritter, whatever, um, that was also provided to the city council, so the city council does have every.
And this, this Ameritech stuff, I remember initiated, started talking, when we were talking about replacing computers, correct?
That is correct.
And it played into the whole IT service.
Yes.
And the setup and the nine, ten, eleven that we just talked about.
Correct.
And we had the three bids in front of us with the pricing and all that.
That's correct, we, I mean, I know things are always done the same way, but if there are significant cost savings, I mean, we're looking, going to the bond market, we're looking at fire trucks, police cars.
Cost, cost savings don't matter, the agreements are required to be approved, it doesn't matter what the net is.
Well, here, here's the thing.
She just realized.
It's okay, but, hold on, well, thank God, we got it now.
That's right.
We, we got it now, and everybody knows what the precedent is, they know what the rules are, and we know what to be moving forward, so this, this is a mistake, and this is a mistake that nobody in our department or nobody in the city will, uh, make moving forward, that's the goal.
But agreements were provided to us, how do, how do we get them, are they?
It should've been in your email.
There's quotes, but not agreements.
There, there, there's copies of quotes, but they're no contracts.
Yes, sir, if, if you look on your agenda and you look at the emails that you all received yesterday, approximately ten thirty-eight PM, you'll see that everybody was provided, Ashton, um, he noticed it today, when we were going through some other emails on his. You have to read the fine print, I believe it is on for Ameritech's.
Well, you should've ever pulled it up on your, um.
Page two for Ameritech or the payment screen.
Or pull it up on your phone, you should've put your email up on your phone, and that would be your attachment.
It's also on his, uh, laptop as well.
He says, is there, he can help us.
I, I will go.
It's okay, it's fine. Let me just shut it down, I'll wake up my phone.
Is all right there?
Laura, is it yours here?
It just went to the screensaver, there's eighty-seven percent salary remaining.
So can we, are you gonna read all of the agreements?
No, I'm not reading, um, no, I'm gonna have to read them all, but I'm not reading nine, ten, eleven.
The regular email we get is forty documents.
He got it. He found it, all right, so we wanna go ahead to, um, number twelve, or you guys need a minute?
I'm good.
Are you sure, you want me to wait a minute?
I'm good.
You sure? I mean, we can wait, just, it's only a thing.
I just don't understand why we make some departments get like multiple quotes for different things and some are allowed to just pick what they want.
It's not for the same stuff though, and these were agreements, I mean, it's not for the same stuff, that's what we were talking about. So we have these, and we're gonna call them mistakes, because that's what they were, or misunderstandings, they're in several departments over the season. So again, we're gonna have these on the next few agendas, because we do need to make it right.
We had an item with three bids on it.
Yeah, I am, I can answer that question, we did go with the current provider and ask them to provide, um, quotes, and they were getting to increase our hourly rate by two hundred and ten dollars.
Yeah, I, I remember that.
Then, um, Mr. Galen came in, and we started talking to him, and then he went back to his folks and they dropped the cost down significantly. Um, so we did get quotes for that, um, and we did get quotes as well for number thirteen.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's all good, Ms. Lambert, thank you.
But it's okay, but, you know.
Yeah, we're okay.
Things happen, and we just wanna make sure we don't make them again, that's why we're bringing it forward, so they will be on there, and they won't have future dates or current dates, they will be back dates. So either we're gonna leave them alone, or we're gonna bring it before us and we just do the right thing and approve it and move forward, that's a decision we have to make.
Yeah, we're just voting on it.
So we'll, we'll go to number twelve, um, discussion that is necessary by city clerk treasurer Alexandria Lambert to in, enter into a five-year service agreement with, um, Crescendo for telephone services at a one-time rate of fifteen hundred dollars and a monthly rate of one thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-six.
Correct, Crescendo, um, they will be providing the telephone services. Um, it does not have to be bid out according to the Alabama League of Municipalities and the competitive bid law. However, we did again go to the current provider and explain to them that we would be getting, looking into getting a new phone system, everybody would get new phones, the whatever IP, we did ask them if they could match or beat the competitor, and the answer was no. Um, so we did seek them out as well, we're not just making changes to make changes, we're trying to get what's in the best interest of the city and cost savings.
Yeah, and thank you, Lee, for bringing this to our attention, because of you, we were able to get these things on the agenda, so we can get them corrected, so, thank you so much for that. So number, the next two are connected, is it number, um, thirteen?
Twelve and thirteen are connected, yes, ma'am.
So number thirteen, discussion that is necessary by city clerk treasurer Alexandria Lambert to enter into a five-year service agreement with, um, Crescendo for a polyphone power supply at a monthly rate of nineteen dollars and fourteen cents. Sixty-six polyphones power supply at a rate of twenty-nine pers- twenty-nine cents per month. And also too, um, it was a significant, significant cost savings with, um, switching providers on this one as well too, right, Alex?
Eleven hundred dollars a month, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So do we have any, um, questions about the phone, I know we've been talking about it over the course of a couple of weeks, and we finally have it on here, so we can, um.
I'm good.
Laura? All right, so number fourteen is an add item, discussion that is necessary by city clerk treasurer Alexandria Lambert to enter into annual agreements with the Lewis Critter, Critter, Gritter for city hall pest control services for the municipal complex A R C and fire station two.
Again, we had pest control services, we sought outside agencies to provide cheaper services, but to provide the same quality, if not better. Um, we do the pest control for fire station. Um, we do the pest control for Fire Station Two, which is on twenty-one arc and this building. This is also a cost, cost savings. Yes, we did enter into an agreement. However, again, we were unaware and it won't happen again with the City Clerk's office.
And then if there are some supporting documents, Lee, that you aren't seeing, just let her know now so we can make sure we get an email to everybody so that we can have them.
I have one thing. I know, I noticed this company was out of Alex City. Was there not any local Silicotta companies that could provide these services for a decent price?
Which one are you referring to?
You're talking about the Critter?
Yeah. Pest control.
Not that we found that could beat what we were already using.
But you did reach out to something local.
We did. And this also includes termite for the buildings.
Oh.
The only thing too, Alex, I see though, make sure, um, I don't know if you emailed it to us. Is there, is there an amount on these or is it just per?
I put it on the agenda.
Okay.
I can, I got the contracts in front of me.
Just as long as it's on here so we can just, um, read out the dollar amounts.
I did, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Any more questions on that one, y'all?
I'm good.
All right.
As long as we're saving money, I'm good.
Discussion to appoint a member of the city council to the ex-officio to the Silicotta Planning Commission. And I think this is the, um, me.
This, this is the one you got to ask me to place on the agenda?
Yes, and this is the one for, um, just remind everybody again, this is the one that, um, isn't it what Ben Robbins was talking about, the one?
This is the planning commission.
Oh, the planning, uh, I'm sure, okay, yeah. And then too, I remember. I remember when I first started this, Lee, when you first started doing this. I know you told me that it was important that the, whoever was in charge, the council president, be appointed to this, um, to this board. And we've had a lot of changes with, um, liaison assignments. So, um, I just think we just need to, need it to mix it up and everybody, I know. Everybody feels that they were doing a good job over here, but I hope we'll continue to do a good job within the assignments. And on some of these boards, I will be reaching out, say like, I'm just going to say to name a few. I'm not saying nobody's important or somebody's less important than the other one, but like the planning commission, maybe the Board of Education, just to name a couple, the hospital. If you can't make it, maybe reach out to one of us so somebody can go in your place. So that way we at least still have representation. So just shoot out a text message or something, you know, or make sure we're staying in contact with the directors or whoever's over those boards. But just try your best to, um, if you can't make it, send somebody in your place.
That's right.
So that way there's city representation everywhere. And then we're all a part of everything. All right, um.
What now are we on?
Sixteen.
Number sixteen, discussion that is necessary by interim police chief Rondell Hughes and Dr. Tom Osborne to purchase one twenty twenty-four Ford F- one fifty SuperCrew four-by-four for the school resource officer totaling sixty-two thousand. Funding split fifty percent between the Board of Education and PD's earmark funding. And here we have, um, interim police chief Rondell Hughes and Tom Osborne.
Thank y'all for, um, seeing us. Um, excuse me. The school and police department decided to go in together to fund the vehicle for the SRO. The SRO car currently now is way, way, way needing a lot of work. In which I've talked to Ed Ford about correcting it. But when you correct it and he corrects it, you know, as you already know, we have three canine animals. I have one canine animal. We found a car, so that car will be assigned to that person. Um, when we went down to Stavers looking for black explorers, there were none available. However, there were black F- one fifty trucks available at a cheaper price. I was able to acquire two trucks at a savings of seven thousand dollars. And I talked to Mr. Osborne about it. I said, hey, there was a department down there that, uh, ordered ten trucks, but didn't get them. When I got to, um, they had five left. And I talked to Mr. Osborne about it and he said he would be willing to look into it. I called the guy. He had three. Asked him to put our name on one so we could come talk to y'all tonight. Now, um. In addition with that truck, it'd be a total savings of ten thousand dollars. As you already know, you have already agreed to do this with the school.
So let me ask you this. Would it be an F- one fifty with that, um, would that support the need of an SRO? Like they don't have to transport anybody or do anything like that?
He doesn't have a cage in his vehicle, man. Okay, what he does transport is, you know, kids home or something like that. Just like we do with the canine officers. If there's a bad guy he picks up, another officer will get him.
So what, um, is this total included? Because if we decide to do this one, this car would have to be stripped. I know I'm probably saying it wrong. Like it will be marked on the outside and has to be dressed up?
It will be, and that price is included into that.
So that's, this price is totaling the, um, the inside equipment and the, the outside stuff?
It won't be outfitted with a cage. It won't have all the things that a, a computer or anything like that, that regular patrol vehicle has because it's a school.
But will it have like the computerized stuff in it though?
The, the one he has now, no.
It doesn't? I didn't know that.
And, and that's because he does data because he says SORO.
Because he says SORO.
Okay.
So it's, and, and I didn't, and that's making significant savings and not putting that stuff in the equipment to that ten thousand.
Okay, so, um, so as you know too, the next one, um, and they, they go hand in hand, but they don't. And, um, on number seventeen, I called everybody. I got, was able to get everybody to Laura. That we, um, we verbally agreed to buy the two, um, new F- one fifties with, and, um, Rondell just missed, mentioned as a cost savings because essentially we had, how many cars did we agree to buy? Ten? We had agreed to buy ten cars?
It was over sixty years.
I think it was, I think it was.
It was ten.
I think it was ten. And then we were, um, something came up to where we can get four free, yeah, so.
That's right. And we had to get, we had to do that right there or we lost the deal.
Yeah, there are several pros and cons to making decisions like this, and there are times when the decision had to be made right then.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that legal?
May I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead. Um, you will go first. You want to go first?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
This is important, Ms. Lambert. We need to change to the agenda for the items eleven and sixteen and seventeen. Per the operating procedure ordinance number twenty-one eighty-one dash sixteen. Any ordinance or resolution or proposition submitted to the council resulting in expenditure of money in an amount of equal to or greater than fifteen thousand dollars must automatically lay over to the next meeting and cannot be approved in the meeting in which it's proposed. The exception is, we have to declare an emergency. And if an emergency is that the deals would not be available if we waited for another two weeks, that's fine. But we have to, as a council, unanimously declare emergency, meaning we need to suspend the rules for immediate consideration or we can't consider it per the operating rules of the city of Silicotta.
Well, how about we do all those things you just said? Because I think it's an emergency.
Written, just so I can make sure I change the agenda.
Ordinance, although the requirement is ordinance twenty-one eighty-one dash sixteen, Article Six, Section One. But if you just do a suspend the rules.
Give immediate consideration.
Give it consideration as long as we declare it as an emergency.
I think it's an emergency because we've already ended our, um.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Well, it's like I said, um, this department ordered ten vehicles.
Hold on, Rondell. He, he went back to another agenda item. I'm sorry.
I didn't think we had to suspend the rules and give immediate consideration unless we had a resolution already written and on file. I thought back to, because I remember when you was pressed that we would suspend the rules, give immediate consideration, but we had a resolution on file.
But this is a proposition to spend money of over fifteen thousand dollars. All of these, ninety-four thousand dollars and another hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
And I did, probably Alabama legal municipalities spoke to Rob Johnson. He said unless an ordinance or resolution is written, we do not have to suspend the rules.
But you can't spend more than fifteen thousand dollars unless you declare an emergency because you're not allowed to spend it on the same day that you introduce it.
Wouldn't it be considered an emergency since we've already, um, we're, we're ending the contract?
Suspend the rules, immediate consideration, approve it, done, comply with the rules, done.
Can I just do that?
All right, thank you for that. I may look at that.
So on all three of those, we just suspend the rules, give immediate consideration.
Done what Article Six says.
Article Six says all ordinance, resolutions, or propositions submitted by the council for consideration which will result in an expenditure of money in an amount of equal to or greater than fifteen thousand dollars shall lie over until the next regular meeting.
We will change.
Well, well, we may not have to because.
But in case of an emergency, the council may not unanimous consent.
I don't, I don't think we need to declare an emergency. And like, like Nate said, since there is no resolution in place, I think we can, um, I think it can be voted on.
You can't do it unless you declare emergencies in the rules.
But there's, there was no resolution in place.
It's not a resolution. It's a proposition to spend more than fifteen thousand dollars.
The money's already spent and the check's already been cut and the people have been paid. I don't even understand.
Hasn't been approved.
Okay, well, we're gonna.
Has, has to be an emergency.
Is that legal to do?
Ho- hold on, one legal question at a time, Laura. You were asking if something else was illegal too.
No, no, that's the same thing I was asking.
She just asked it.
I thought she was asking about the cars. So she asked if something else illegal when we decided to, um, with the cars, we decided to purchase the cars. She asked if two things were illegal. Yeah, it was two things.
And clarify for the, um, the Board of Education and, uh, Police Department. We do have a, a contract that the council did approve for this fiscal year to purchase, uh, a vehicle. Am I correct or was I mistaken?
No, that, that's correct. The, the agreement says that half the cost of a marked police vehicle along with all the equipment that is required by the department that will make it serviceable police vehicle for both uses of the school, SRO when school is in session, and a patrol officer when school is out. Request is subject to approval by the Silicotta City Council.
That's.
That agreement was signed. We talked just for what we're doing.
But the one, but the one with the, with the Board of Education?
Our part is more than fifteen. It's specifically in the rules. You can't do it at the same meeting. You can lay over till the next meeting, or we can say there's an emergency, suspend the rules and do it.
But we also know that if, if everybody doesn't vote to suspend the rules, we can't vote on it. And we know you guys are going to vote no. All right, um.
My, my interest, if I may, President, uh, is the memorandum of understanding was signed in August. Our commitment was to purchase half the vehicle. And at this discounted rate, that's a better position for us to have.
It is, and it's, it's a cost savings to everybody, the city and the Board of Education.
Absolutely.
But we, we've never done this before. So we, I mean, we've never done this before, Lee, even when you were president.
We, we were not spending two hundred thousand dollars without having it approved and discussed it before the meeting.
What about the safe thing?
It, it, hold on, I was getting to that. That's why I said.
Thank you.
Asking two things were illegal. I, I was getting to that as well because Laura, you asked. This is what you said. You said, it's just illegal. What about when we just did it, um, the last meeting for the state abatement?
Did we cut the check or did?
We did. We, we did it right there. It's the same thing.
Of the vehicles.
We, we cut the check. It's the same thing. And we've done it time after time after time. And Lee, you set the standard. Because we were following your, your lead. You talked, why are you talking to this?
But I just asked a question about this particular item. Is that legal for us?
It was legal last week. It's legal this week.
I don't think it's legal.
Period paragraph. We can't do it without following the year.
What the SRO vehicle, that's got a contract memorandum of understanding together since August. So that should be no issue to vote on it right now. And we can argue about the other two.
But no amount was authorized by the council. This was authorizing an agreement to purchase.
I don't think we should argue about any of them. I think we should. I think everybody has said what they have to say, and I think we should just move forward with the way the agenda is listed.
I was about to say, do we need to move that or do we need to do the suspend?
If, if we don't suspend the rules, we're breaking the law for the record.
It, that's noted. All right, so back to the, um, to this, so are we going?
Ask the city attorney for advice before we get ourselves in trouble.
Are we, so what are we going to do about the, um, the police card for the SRO?
We have an agreement, although a money amount was not. You guys did agree that he could do that. He's asking now for the council to approve it.
And our, and our portion is just half of the sixty-two thousand, Alex?
Yes, ma'am. Our portion is thirty-one thousand.
But it's more than fifteen thousand.
All right, so are we gonna, um, are we gonna decide to get this? Because I mean, first they had five cars. First they had how many? Then they got to five. Now they have three. So it is first time, first served, right?
That's correct.
And I, I guess my question would be, um, no offense to the Board of Education, Tom, so please don't take it this way. But, um, if the Board of Education wants to purchase this car now for fifty percent off, um, and it is a savings, is the city going to, when the price goes up, pay for that other portion? If the, if the Board of Education wants to do it now and the city doesn't?
And well, that's, that's the question at hand. That's the question. Are we going to split the, um, the cost? So I'm, I'm here.
We agreed to split the cost.
Are we, but are we going to vote on it? It's on the agenda to be voted on tonight so that they can go ahead and buy it.
It gives us a chance that we'll lose this vehicle.
We're going to go. That's why we need to do it.
And I didn't think anybody would tell the board no. You can't tell the children, go to safety.
All right, so we're done with number sixteen?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Can I say one thing?
Please.
If. I haven't studied what we, I haven't, haven't read that. But if everybody is going to agree, and I'm not holding you because I don't have the ability to do that. If everybody without, if everybody gets, agrees, all of you agree to suspend the rules. And it's safer to do it that way and not take a chance that we're going to get in trouble with the rule that he brought in. But I can't say, I can't read minds and he hasn't voted, but I just want to throw that out. That's a safer path to get in the zone without me having researched it before, knowing, I haven't read that rule that he was just talking about.
So this is my thing. First, there was a problem because things weren't brought, because, before the council to be approved before we purchased it. Now it's in front of the council. We're discussing it and we're going to vote on it tonight, and there's still a problem.
For the rules.
But the rules that you've never used before. And we, we, we've done this. What were these rules when we did the safe, um, vehicle? What were these rules when, when you were president and we followed your lead and we did all these things? I think, I think, this is what I think, and you know, you guys can tell me how you want to do it. I think we should go along with the agenda as printed. And if something comes up, then, then we'll, we'll fix it. This is what I think. Ashton, what do you think?
Yeah, let's go.
All right, okay. All right, sounds good. And back to, um, to number seventeen, and we want to make sure this is out too. We did agree, I talked to three of you, Laura and Axler, and everybody agreed for us to go ahead and buy these two police cars because it wasn't a cost savings and we had already agreed to buy ten, and it is on here to, uh, approve tonight. And we've already, we did have the cars. And we've done this before in the past many a times. All right, so number eighteen, update that is necessary by recent abandonment officer Josh Coleman on the status of properties within the city. Josh?
Council, Mayor. Got a couple of points for update, uh, since I spoke with you two weeks ago. First is that, uh, as I promised, that last, uh, meeting that I was close to finishing up. I'm reviewing all of the cases that were on the desk from, um, Officer Metter when he retired. So I have a remaining twenty-two cases that I reviewed to wrap the, um, um, that list up. So I knew exactly what, uh, what I was facing when I started. And the update on my cases, I've closed two abandoned vehicles. And I've, uh, and those were marked and the owners moved them voluntarily. So I closed those cases and then I have four, um, residents that, uh, have also been closed. Uh, one of them is, uh, ten seventeen Old Tall Dega Highway. Uh, the car that, uh, ran into the side of the building, uh, their insurance and litigation has wrapped up. And they now have, uh, full permits to, to bring that building down. So I thought that was good news. Um, Craddock Avenue, uh, maintenance is, uh, being kept up. Four ten Lee is being kept up. And, uh, five oh one Avondale, there was a complaint about, uh, tall grass. And, uh, it, it was cut and updated as of Friday. Uh, so that's an update on my cases. Um, two weeks ago, we also spoke about, um, the properties in the eight hundred block of North Main. Um, decent properties, so I have been very focused on those properties since we last spoke. And, uh, the last thing that, that, uh, you asked me to do was move forward quickly. So with that, that next week, as promised, I have a asbestos survey, uh, in because of, uh, because of something that Mintz Machine found out when they were getting some quotes on the landfill and waste management side of it. So that sort of put me in a little bit of a pause, and I had to research asbestos and learned a lot more than I thought I'd ever learned about asbestos. With that, went to State of Alabama and located certified survey company. And while I was working on that, I also got caught up in the agreement slash contract. So I apologize for, for me adding to this. But I have a, is it attached to my speaking notes?
It is, sir, they have it on their tablets.
Okay, so Mr. Thomas Ahern with Clinchfield Consulting Group handled all four residents. That's eight oh five, eight oh seven, eight oh nine, and eight eleven. With their combined cost, we handled these separately, but ultimately it was eleven thousand four hundred to do all the testing and all the lab requirements. With that, out of all four of those residents, one came back with no asbestos. So then I have to face the asbestos remediation before Mintz Machine can come in. So this was sort of in the middle of discovering the agreement contract issues. So at this point, the survey has been conducted, and that has been completed. And now on hold is the hiring Clinchfield as a consultant. So because of my newness to City of Sulicaga, being very careful with federal guidelines revolving around asbestos. So all that to say, they are offering a service of consultation, the seal bid that's related to this. Because once, I said, well, how much are we talking about? Because I, number one, needed to make sure that I have enough in my budget to handle that. And number two, am I gonna run into a seal bid issue with the thirty thousand? So when he told me one house is sixty-five thousand, I said, I need some paperwork. So with that being said, it's probably gonna be northwards of a hundred and twenty-five for all, for three of the homes to remove the asbestos, and that's gonna have to be seal bid. These are all ballpark numbers that, that I was using to determine where I need to go from there. I have that money in my budget, but just letting you know that on the agreement for the surveys, eleven four, and the agreement for them to handle all the consultation is forty-seven hundred. Any questions on?
I don't have any, Josh.
I don't have any, Josh, thanks.
Yes, gotta be done.
I've been, I haven't slowed down, I've just been trying to make sure.
Change directions a bit.
I'm sorry?
Change your direction a good bit, dude.
Well, one process turned into three steps.
Got to, I mean, it's, it's all got to be done, I appreciate it.
Then my last thing that I have talking point wise is one thing that I have quickly learned is that I'm playing sort of behind the curve ball on all these properties, especially your vacant, abandoned, foreclosed type properties. So I've, I've done some extensive research, and I'm in the process of putting together an ordinance to propose to council during my next speaking time. And the title will be registration of certain vacant and foreclosing properties. And that's something that could assist us in getting ahead of these items, to not always feel like we're playing catch-up. So once I get that ordinance proposal together, I'll definitely be getting that out to Alex and the mayor to, to pass on to you.
So we're gonna go into a bid process then with the asbestos stuff?
Correct.
Is that a, town, was the town being on that?
So, once I know that we are good to go to hire Clinchfield as the consultant, they, their proposal that I'm bringing forward to you is the asbestos abatement specifications, the bid solicitation, and contractor site walk.
That's that eleven thousand?
All, no, that's forty-seven hundred. That's for all four properties, and they walk us, the city, through the entire process because of, just dropping off this stuff to GFL, there's like federal guidelines on paperwork that I've never filled out before, so they walk us through all that process.
Two questions, can Mintz Machine go ahead and start on the one house of loud asbestos? And then, once this is cleared with the survey and the walkthrough and all that, are they able to do the cleanup with the asbestos, or is that gonna be the order of bid?
I don't think it's gonna hold up Mintz Machine on that one home. Because my budget is starting to get tight, I have found some best practices to, to help with some of the, the waste management side of it, that even we will be using with Mintz Machine.
Because, because we're in a contract with them for those four properties, and I'm, I'm curious, if it comes back and they can't do the asbestos cleanup, how do we handle that since we've already got another contract for those four properties?
So I'm ahead of the curve on the companies for the contractor options. So I reached out to two companies that are state certified to do remediation. And so Clinchfield, when I gave them those names, they told me those are actually over the top two that they would use.
So they would come in and do their thing, and the Mintz Machine would still pick up and do the rest as the contract states?
And we would schedule all this where it's all happening together.
Cool, okay.
So they'll all work together, even Mintz Clay came by and met the surveyor, because I'm trying, you know, collab everyone in this, so everything happens guaranteed by October one. But I think it's gonna be sooner than that, but I'm just jumping through the loopholes.
All right, any more questions on that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Yes, ma'am.
Number nineteen, discussion that is necessary by councilman repairman district four to appoint Dana Hill and Lakeisha Crawford for the missing abatement board replaces Hal Goodwin and Elena Mix. Terms, term runs concurrent with city council. All right, any questions on that, you have anything to add?
I think I had six, six applications of interest, emails of interest after we announced at the last meeting that they were two formal vacancies, and these seem to be the best to me ahead of the bench.
All right, sounds good. So number twenty, discussion that is necessary by city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert regarding, regarding the financial management policy.
I'd like to respectfully withdraw that at this time.
Okay, so as we get ready to conclude, the work session and our read was going to be on the agenda to be voted on. Does anybody have anything that needs to be discussed? All right, so the city council, old business, action that is necessary to approve Resolution number seventy dash twenty twenty-four, authorizing engagement of an underwriter. Action that is necessary to appoint member to the city council, council of the ex officio to the Sulicaca Planning Commission. Action that's necessary to approve Department of Brick Recreation to spend four hundred dollars in the earmark tax funds for the Little League baseball teams, and I think that was four hundred apiece, right?
The six of you dropped out.
Oh.
Yes, one thing.
Oh, okay. All right, why did they drop out?
They just couldn't, couldn't all go.
Oh, okay, all right. Number three, action that is necessary to authorize Mayor Heigl to enter into a contract with building and earth services to provide preliminary subsurface exploration and geotechnical engineering. Action that is necessary to ratify and authorize Mayor Heigl to enter into a maintenance agreement with Ameritech. Also, action that is necessary to ratify Mayor Heigl to enter into an agreement with Ameritech and vendors. So these are all the things that we talked about in the, in the work session. Action that is necessary to authorize Mayor Heigl to enter into an agreement with Ameritech for block time. So there's three things on here for Ameritech. Action that is necessary to authorize Mayor Heigl to enter into a five-year service agreement with Presendo for telephone services. Action that is necessary to ratify Mayor Heigl to enter into a five-year service agreement for the same company for polyphone power supply. Number nine, ten, eleven are ad items. One is for the pest control, the second one, the second one is also for the pest control. I think one of them you said included time out services, oh, it's for two separate places. The next one is for, it's also for pest control, so all three of these are for pest control, just at three separate locations. Another ad item, action that is necessary to ratify and authorize Mayor Heigl to enter into an agreement with Clinchfield Consulting Group to conduct an asbestos survey for four residential structures. Action that is necessary to ratify and authorize Mayor Heigl to enter into an agreement with Clinchfield Consulting. This is also for asbestos abatement. Action that is necessary to approve the purchase of the school resource vehicle. So Alex, if we were to, to do this, are we approving the entire, are we paying the entire money and the Board of Education paying us back?
Yes, I did talk to various, Dr. Osborne, we would write one check to Stivers.
And they would pay us back?
Yes, we would take it from their allocation, and he has provided that in writing, which we will attach, that, that's something that he will take care of.
Okay, action that is necessary to ratify and approve the purchase of two F-150 Super Cruise accessories and has the total, action that is necessary to approve appointment of the missing abatement for Lee's District. Action that is necessary to approve appointment of, again, a missing abatement board member. Action that is necessary to approve the June twenty twenty-four payroll. Action that is necessary to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four accounts payments. And does anybody else have anything else to add on the work session?